Carrie, you good? Gentlemen, gentlemen. Brian will come back. All right. Okay, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the City Commission for Tuesday, June 22nd. If you would, please silence your cell phones. Our apologies for being a little bit late. We had meetings that started at 5:00 or 5:30 and went a little bit long and then we had to scarf down dinner because we're going to be here quite a while, it looks like, based on this agenda. So, City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Colode.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to begin with an invocation and a pledge. If you'd join us in standing for that, we'll have Police Department Chaplain Bev Richardson will give the invocation, then we'll have a pledge just after.
Will you join with me in prayer? God of all seasons, we are grateful that a new season has begun where families and friends can once again gather and enjoy the incredible resources we have here in New Smyrna Beach. We ask, oh Lord, that you will continually guide the leadership of this city to make wise choices, to have discernment, that our generation and generations to come will continue to have a history of good stewardship and a place where all are accepted and can enjoy the goodness that you have given to us. We ask your blessing upon the commissioners as they are here tonight, upon those who provide leadership in all areas of our city, and those who serve us. And we pray this in the name of Jesus. May all God's children say amen.
Okay. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the vision of the great Jesus Christ. Callie, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
Yes, sir. I have three items, and that is under consent agenda. Item 6B, and that's Resolution Number 2221, considered adoption of a resolution which was adopted with amend the neighborhood council term length. And then 6C, Resolution Number 2321.
Yep.
And then 6D, Resolution 2421. And that's at the request of the City Clerk that these items will be brought back to the Commission in August.
Okay, we're still going to pull 6B, C, and D. Got it.
Thank you.
So we're pulling B, C, and D for future consideration. Any other changes?
Nothing.
Thank you.
All right, we have one presentation. Before we do that, though, I wanted to acknowledge, this is typically the time we would do a proclamation, and this year, just last week, President Biden signed a law establishing Juneteenth as a national, Juneteenth National Independence Day as a federal holiday, and that, of course, commemorates June 19th, 1865, when the Union soldiers marched into Galveston, Texas, and ended slavery in Texas, which was the last state to free slaves. It's considered the longest-running African-American holiday and has been called America's Second Independence Day. So, obviously, agenda, everything was published before that happened, so we've already talked to staff. We'll be working on that for next year. We're going to meet with leaders from across the city and talk about how we can appropriately acknowledge and support and celebrate that event moving forward, but be remiss of it and mention it tonight. With that, we'll start off with our first presentation. We have our golf advisory board chair, William Portell. And this is a series we're doing where we're actually hearing from our advisory chairpersons, and they're presenting to us. So with that, William.
Mayor, City Commissioners, and staff, great to talk to you tonight. And just a minor correction, Mayor, I'm vice chair.
Sorry, Vice Chair.
It's okay. Hannah Jones apologizes that she can't be here tonight to do it in person. I'll be quick, because I know your agenda is long, so I want to be mindful of your time. But I just want to let you know that the Golf Advisory Board's goal is to try to find ways to improve operations so there'll be less of a financial impact on the city's budget. One of the things that has occurred due to COVID is we have found out over the last five months is that more individuals are playing more rounds of golf. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to encourage that, not only with the adults, but with the students in the community as well. So I know you have a copy of our annual report. If you have any questions, you're more than welcome to contact me or Hannah Jones. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for providing this report. I think it's the first annual report from this particular board, and this is, again, a new thing that we're doing, and we'll get feedback from the Commission on that as we move forward. I'm thinking now it may be good to have a workshop where we just hear from all of those presentations at once, because the last few, I feel like you've had to kind of rush through it at the beginning of these meetings. So, any other comments on that? Hearing none. Next item up, public participation. This is your chance to speak to the Commission on anything you would like. You will have three minutes to address the Commission. My respect is you, my ask is you be respectful of everyone in attendance. They will hear you, and you will hear them. Yes, if you'd like to speak, come on forward. You're going to come to this mic right here and give your name and address. I see one from the very, very back. If you'd like to speak after him, there's some chairs right up front. Don't be shy. Come on down. Save us all some time. Yes, sir. Right here, this mic right here.
My name is Dan Moran. I am from the, talking about the Turnbull Dog Park, I was here last time.
Speak around that mic if you could for me.
Oh, there it is, okay. And what I wanted to do is come back to follow up, and first of all, thank Commissioners McGurk and Hartman for coming over and looking at the situation. And in the back, he wouldn't come up with me. He chickened out on me. That's Roger Miller, in the back. He's the gentleman who's, the dog park is on his, 10 feet from his property line, on Turnbull. So what we have to present to the board tonight is a petition of 45 residents, I mean, in opposition to the dog, the dog park, not, I should say, not in opposition to the dog park, the dog park the way it's configured right now, and the location. And, okay.
Thank you, sir.
May respectfully request that the board reconsider the action that was taken to put the dog park in that location on Turnbull, for the reasons that, first of all, in terms of Roger's property and other properties, and, you know, the noise and everything else that goes along with the dog park is a considerable issue. It literally is 10 feet from his house. So that's number one. And the other point, just to mention, as you probably all may have heard, that Port Orange has a rabies outbreak, and they are cautioning people in Port Orange about, you know, their dogs, I guess they've had some cases. Since this dog park, or any dog park, I don't believe in New Smyrna, has any kind of controls to limit access, something we need to be concerned about, because dogs could very easily come from Port Orange into the dog park, and, you know, most dogs who have a vaccine are okay, but puppies definitely would be a real, real problem. So that's a concern. The, again, we're not against the dog parks. Parks are great out there. Like I mentioned last time, I love dogs more than white people. And what we want to do is just find a way to make this work for everybody, so it's a reasonable solution. And if there's anything I can do to help at all, I built one of these up north before I moved down here, know how it's done, and know the myriad of regulations that are out there, and I'd be more than happy to help in any way I possibly could.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Nope.
Not right now. So public participation is our chance to hear from you all, and then we speak after that, and Mayor and Commission comments at the end of the meetings when we.
Sure. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Yes, Scott, come ahead. And again, if you want to speak after Scott, if you come down front.
So, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I rise today, Scott Stager, 4666 Champagne Circle, to demand a rematch.
Yeah.
Appreciate everybody who participated in the Dunk Tank at Seaside Fiesta on Thursday night. Mr. Mayor, who I will admit dunked me once, but not three times, as was his opportunity. However, we had a really good time. I really just want to say thanks to everybody who did this. It was a blast. We raised over $1,000 for Police Athletic League. And so for those of you who sat up there in a pair of shorts and allowed people to knock you down in the water and laugh at you as they went by, we had a really good time, and I just really wanted to say how much I appreciate it. However, the next one, I will have to win, but who wouldn't take the chance to dunk the chief of police? I mean, come on. How do you beat that? I will be there next time. Thank you guys very much for that. I love New Smyrna, great city.
Thanks, Scott. That was myself. So Scott participated, Chief Coffin, Commissioner Colode, and myself participated. Chief Coffin raised the most money. I wasn't aware there was a competition, or else I would have brought in some ringers, but I was a close, close second. And then, then it fell out from there. So, yes, sir, come ahead. Important thing is, we raised money for a great cause, so.
I'm Roger Miller. I live beside the dog park, like 10 foot away. I want to thank you guys for your time. You've got to have some kind of ruling. You just can't open the doors and let it go wide open. I'm there seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 10 foot away, constant fighting, constant trash, people camping. It can go on. The noise, there's no control. My life's shot that fast. I just ask you, I beg you, everything's in your own hands. What happens to me after tonight, it's up to you guys. 10 foot.
Thank you, sir. Any others for public participation? Seeing none, we will close public participation. Next item up is consent agenda. There are 18 minus three, there's 15 items on consent agenda. Remember, gentlemen, items B, C, and D have been removed. Would anybody, or pulled for later consideration? Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda? And if you all remember, if you just have a brief comment, you want to thank staff for something, just this is your chance to do that as well, and you don't have to pull the item for just a very, very brief comment. Commissioner Colode, anything to pull or any comments?
Comment on 6E.
Go ahead.
6E has to do with the.
Make sure to talk into your mic so they can hear you.
Washington Street between Riverside and One is one of our very heavily traveled roads, leaving the beach. It's either South or North Causeway. This road is totally insufficient for handling that traffic. It also has sidewalks with telephone poles in them. I remember one of the first photos I got was from a resident with the street past Faulkner, in her wheelchair, that she couldn't go down the sidewalk, she had to go out in the street on it. So this is improvement. We got grants on it, we got help on it, and we're going to get it done. It's going to be a major improvement.
Okay.
That's it.
Commissioner Sacks, anything to pull or any brief comments?
Just a question for staff on 6I. The contract change order, hopefully, we wouldn't expect any more change orders for the cost of the annex after this one?
Thing is, J, I have that as J.
Oh, you do, that's right. I have an incorrect because of an addition.
The City Hall Annex project.
It is J.
Yeah, what about it?
Any more, would you expect any more change orders on this one?
There is one more change order, will be the final change order on the project that Michelle is working on. So we're close to the completion date, so we expect at least one final change order.
Any thoughts on the cost?
That's to close out the project.
Okay. Thanks, Callie. That's all I have.
Commissioner.
I also have a comment on J. I'm not crazy about some of these change orders. I had some issues with them, but I certainly want to thank Michelle for all the hard work that she's done in working with these and trying to get through them, so we certainly do appreciate it, and forward to the final.
And just a side comment, and I think I mentioned it before, but I think I need to mention it publicly, that the numbers that you see, those are not the numbers that were submitted. I mean, we went through a lengthy process in order to get to the numbers that you have today, so just want to make sure that this is not the first number that they submitted. I mean, it took Michelle quite some time to go through the process, make sure that they have the backup documents, and negotiate the costs on those items.
Okay. Is it?
That's it.
I just have one quick comment on J as well, just since you all said that. Anyone who's ever done any work on historic property, if you walk out with six or seven change orders, you pop the champagne. I mean, that's the reality. We should have known when we signed up for that project that that's what it comes with. You never know what happens when you start opening up walls and floors, and that's what we ran into. It wasn't that we've dramatically changed scope or anything else, we've just dealt with the challenges that a hundred or so-year-old building presented us, and we've preserved it for future generations, which I'm really excited about. And most of these, if not all, I believe, have been within the allotted contingency that we went into the project with. So it was, we didn't know what we would find, but we knew to find something, and so this is how we addressed it. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding B, C, and D?
So moved.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And since agenda's approved, thank you all. Item 7A, we have a partial lien satisfaction for properties in Orange City tied to a property owned by Tarpon Four and LLC in New Smyrna Beach. This one is interesting. I'll let Barbara explain, but Carrie, you may also help explain this. These are properties that are not located here. These are properties located in Orange City, so we're not releasing liens on any properties located in Orange City, or located in New Smyrna Beach. This is kind of unrelated to us. So, anyway, do you have anything to add to that?
No, you're correct. The properties, we have properties in New Smyrna that were owned by Tarpon Four LLC, and we have several liens against their properties that are located in our city, which attach, our liens attach to all their properties located within Volusia County. So this property owner purchased the properties, and they're in Orange City on North Volusia Avenue, I believe. So they are just requesting that the liens from those two properties only are released by the city of New Smyrna.
So Tarpon has basically gone defunct. As other people are buying up these properties, they're trying to clear those liens. Our hope is, one day, someone will buy the Tarpon properties in New Smyrna, and we can clear up those liens and get those properties back on the tax roll and be part of our community. But for now, as they do other ones, we, that's basically where these committed to play. Did I get that right, Carrie?
Yeah. And we do have one property, 513 Josie Street.
Right, right.
That was purchased, and we did get that signed.
And we're satisfied, yeah. We have one outstanding at this point, I think.
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion on this item?
Move for a break.
I have a second.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
No.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Lean amnesty request was adopted, and again, for clarity, nothing related to the city of New Smyrna, it doesn't, and I questioned staff extensively, it doesn't take any negotiation leverage or power that we have off the table. It just allows commerce to proceed in another city in a rightful way, so right decision. 7B, options for temporary use of 120 Flagler Avenue, Assistant City Manager.
Yes, this is a property recently acquired by the city, and we are anticipating using portions of this property as part of the Flagler Peninsula Intersection Improvements Project, which is currently in the design phase. There's an existing building on site. We've spoken to a building-moving contractor. The cost to move it and keep it on that site would be about $50,000. The cost to move it to an off-site location on city property somewhere would be about $100,000, just for reference. But in the meantime, before that project starts, there is an opportunity to use the land. Some options for Commission's consideration are temporary parking. We could probably get eight to 10, maybe up to 12 parking spaces there. It could be used as, also, as a loading/unloading area, which, for delivery vehicles serving businesses along the western end of Flagler Avenue, and there is a need out there for that. We could do loading and unloading, keeping the building as is. We could also look at moving the building, but those are some of the options we could do for immediate use of the property while these other activities are in design. So just open for discussion. We could, Kelly, if you can maybe zoom in on that map a little bit to show the property right at the corner there, that's fine, we're talking right. So loading/unloading, if your truck was traveling eastbound, could turn in, load/unload here. It's tight, but would have to pull out onto Peninsula, and then if that was their only stop, they can make the right turn and head back west out of town.
Okay. All right, Commission, we've got some options before us. Brian, to be clear, there's Concept 1, 2, 3 up here, like intersection improvements that we've talked about in the past. That's really not what we're debating tonight, though, right?
That's correct.
Because just, again, for the record, I think we all really like those.
Yeah, those are coming soon.
If you can be done by this weekend, that'd be fantastic. All right, comments on this item, temporary options for this use? Commissioner Colode?
I can go with either the parking or the loading zone. I prefer the parking. It's needed over there. We had explored the option of buying piece of property on Columbus, however, that did not go through. Eventually, the building will, could be relocated to elsewhere on the site at a relatively reasonable cost, and we also must remember, it's a historic zone, and it's a historic building, so we really want to keep it there. It will be a while before all the traffic improvements are put in, so there's no big rush, and the building doesn't have to be moved for the turn lanes. So it would be my preference that it be used for parking in the area, which is always at a deficit anytime we run any type of function there.
Okay. Brian, I just had a thought. Could it be both?
Yes.
I mean, all of, I mean, just in the mornings, it's loading/unloading, and then it becomes parking, right?
We can definitely do both. We can, could keep the loading/unloading as a priority use during certain hours, and then open it up for more parking.
Just like all the other loading/unloading, that's what I'm going with, so, all right. Commissioner McGurk?
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head, exactly what I was thinking. Why don't we reserve it till noon, 11:30, or maybe 11:45, 11:30 for loading, and then after that is parking, public parking.
Other thoughts from the Commissioner? Anything to add to that? Yes.
So I certainly can support the parking area, using it as a parking area, but contrary to Commissioner Colode, I would support moving the building to a different location. I mean, that's a huge piece of property that we purchased for the purpose of improving that intersection, improving parking, and unloading. To spend the money just to move the building back to the property line, I think, is a waste of funds. We would, I think, better served to have the building somewhere else, perhaps over here to Old Fort Park, to where we can use it as office space, because we're quickly outgrowing the current City Hall that we have. So that certainly is an option, and I think that would be a more prudent thing to do going forward, rather than, we're already going, looking at redesigning the current City Hall with staff that's coming in. This would give us some additional office spaces that were much needed down at the city complex, and so I would support moving the building from that location possibly over to the Old Fort Park.
So, Callie, my understanding was, we're talking about kind of the temporary use, and then we're going to come back and debate kind of that permanent use, or do we want to just have that discussion now?
I guess if that's, if that's one of the options, then we could look into it in more details and come back to you with probably a close cost estimate on if you're going to move it offsite.
Yeah.
Because he has mentioned, Brian mentioned that to move it onsite, it's about $50,000, and roughly, I would say, probably more than, probably in the 100 to 150 to relocate to somewhere else. They were concerned about some of the traffic lights that they have to pass through, so that discussion will come back to you probably at the workshop that we will have in September for the Commission.
So if we can, then let's keep this separate, we'll get everybody in real quick. Temporary use, if you're okay with the proposal, we'll get a motion on that. But, and then what you'd like to see, so staff has some direction of what to pursue, I tend to agree, let's look at that offsite. Obviously, if it's caused prohibitive, we revisit, but if we can do that, I agree, moving it off, moving it offsite, so. Commissioner?
Questions?
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Callie, or Brian, what can you do with the property temporarily while the house is in situ?
We could put it, actually, we could have a temporary, like a short-term lease, if the Commission desired to do so, and I think you have mentioned before. So as soon as we figure out what we want to do in terms of the temporary use for the lot, then we could, because they need some parking if I lease it on a temporary lease, so whatever decision is here, then I could come back with you for another idea on the building itself, if it remains onsite.
Is it possible, if it remains onsite and is moved, can it still be a staging area for trucks?
If it remains onsite and we lease it, we probably make that as part of the agreement to make it a loading/unloading zone for a specific time, if we have enough parking spaces for the building, for the use of the building.
It's a significant difference if you're going to move it offsite to, let's say, the park at Fort, Old Fort. 100 or 150 is quite a big difference, and then it was 50 to move it onsite. So that's a consideration. I, my own thought is, we need both the staging area for the delivery trucks and that few extra spaces that it will provide. I'm hopeful that the scheme of the turn lane will really improve that intersection. I'm hopefully optimistic. I don't see it, but just to have the site for staging of trucks and parking, I would support that.
Okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner Colode?
One very important thing that we haven't discussed yet is that we have a neighborhood council, we have a historic preservation commission. We better present our proposals to them and get their opinions as to what would be appropriate, especially the historic preservation commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So temporarily, I didn't hear any objections to using it as parking and slash unloading/loading congruent with the other, the way we're handling that up and down the street. So can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the temporary usage as parking slash loading/unloading as crafted by staff. I have a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll on that, please.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and then moving forward, thinking more long-term, I agree with Commissioner Colode, let's run some of these ideas through Neighborhood Council, HPC, see if there's something we're forgetting or not thinking about, and then come back with some more finite options as related to the long-term.
So do you want us to run those ideas with the both boards before we come to the Commission?
To me, I would say, start with them, and just with what you have now, just in the idea phase, because they may have an idea we haven't even thought about, and then come back with, you heard some broad support, I heard, for the offsite, but it's kind of costs, it depends on cost. So that's the big variable, is how much does that going to cost? But if they come up with something we haven't thought about, we need to reconsider. You can bring it back as a quick agenda item.
Very good.
All right, item 7C, approval of a mural project under the MLK Bridge. We heard about this at the previous meeting, so for those of you not at that meeting, understand maybe limited discussion, because we've already discussed it at length. Chris, do you have anything to add to? I lost Chris. Where is he at? He's back there. Chris, anything to add on the mural projects from the last meeting? Anything to add today, or tonight, right now?
Nothing. Mayor, Commissioners, if you have anything, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So the only thing I'd call attention to is, at the last meeting, we were very careful to not leave that blank check at the general fund level, so it suggests that the motion here be for the same thing that we accept options 1, 2, and 3, and excluding 4, because we just want to know what that obligation looks like on the general fund. Do I have a motion to accept staff's recommendation of item 1 through 3 in the staff report?
Motion to accept the staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. For clarity, that was just one through three excluding four?
Yes.
Okay. City Clerk, if you could call the role.
Vice Mayor Sachs?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, that was adopted. Item seven D, again, we heard about this at the last meeting. We discussed it extensively at the last meeting.
Mayor Owen, I do need to jump in. So during the break, I went back through the terms of the RFP. And there is some room in three C where it talks about, upon review of the proposals, the city will attempt to negotiate with the top-ranked firm whose proposal is the most advantageous, advantageous to the city, which may include obtaining a best and final offer from that proposer. So if we want to pursue, going back to the negotiation, what we could do is if we end up with a different term or a different sale price than what we did earlier, we could move now to reconvene the CRA meeting right after this meeting and just button it all up tonight.
Okay. Got it. Alright, this is gonna get interesting. Alright, so again, we talked about this in a previous meeting. This is a proposal to sell a city-owned property located at twenty-six fifty and twenty-seven hundred North Dixie Freeway. We, we had appraisals, we had an RFP process that was put out. There was only one respondent, a local company. Offer was one point one million, which was congruent with the lowest appraisal that we had. There was quite a broad range on the appraisal. So at the previous meeting, there was some talk about possibly trying to counter offer. We've now received clarity. It sounds like we do have the latitude to do that. Commissioner, what is your pleasure?
Well, since I'm the one who started it, I might as well go ahead and speak first. I would like that opportunity to up that to one point two five million. There were two appraisals. I don't want to take the lowest amount. I think that the one point two five is a very reasonable price. I think it's a good price and a fair price. And so I would certainly like to, I make, I'll hold off on a motion till you're ready.
Okay. Carrie, for clarity, help me, and this is the joys of doing, you know, business in the sunshine, because it makes, you know, none of us had any clue he was about to do that, so we obviously haven't discussed this at all. What is the preferred, should we ask them their feelings on that? Do we just?
They would need to agree to it. So if they don't agree to it, then.
Would we like to do that before a motion, I guess is what I'm saying? Or do we want to see if we've got commission support?
I think we should pull them up and.
Let's hear from the.
You can hear from the rest of the commission and then let him respond.
Let's, let's hear the respondent. I heard some, you know, I heard some support from the commission the last time, so. Gentlemen.
And thank you for the clarification, Mrs. Avalon. I think my interpretation of the reading of that section is that you can approve, vote to approve the decision to sell it to Coastal Claim Services. And then that also enables you to negotiate after that fact. But I respectfully, going back to the former ratification by the CRA, one point one million dollars in our, from our perspective, was a fair offer. Was the only offer on the property. And the property, according to both appraisals, contained a lot of depreciation. So it's, it's an aged building. There are issues with ceiling tiles, there's some water damage, some leaks. Looks like former water leaks that need to be addressed. Looks like some locks were removed from some doors. There's some flooring issues. So from our perspective, it, it was a fair offer. Certainly respect Commissioner McGurk and certainly respect the city wanting to receive the best price from the property. But from our perspective, it is the market price because it was the only offer. We're also trying to bring a tremendous positive economic impact here to the city. You heard, was stated by Mr. Edwards, that approximately seventy-three million dollars in economic impact would come as a result of Coastal Claims acquiring this property. So we respectfully urge the commission to adopt what it previously offered during the CRA meeting of one point one million dollars. But just for clarification of the process, I think that they can vote to generally approve and negotiate after the fact.
Yes, and we could also clarify what stays and what goes as well. If we want to direct staff to negotiate the price, then we can also address the leftover equipment issue.
Okay. You, you heard from the gentleman that there were numerous items, issues with the property, locks, flooring, some other things. All those conditions were present during both appraisals. They were taken within relatively tight timeframe, I imagine? So that, so they've both been accounted for in both appraisals, yeah? Okay. Alright. Commissioner, what's your pleasure? If we, if we leave it to staff to negotiate, what would be the preferred? Is it we give a window and not to exceed, or not to go beneath, say, just the minimal except?
You could direct staff to negotiate a, a contract for the sale to Coastal Claims for an amount, you know, not below. I know, that's the hard part of negotiating in the sunshine.
Hey, we won't take any less than this, but we're gonna try to get you to pay that. Somebody else ought to run your businesses like we have to run this one. I'd challenge you. Alright. Commissioner Colode.
I just see the benefits of having it in public use again, collecting taxes and generating the business tax income, the personal income, everything that goes along with it. We do have an appraisal at one point one million. I'd love one point two five. I'd love one point five. But I just can't see entering into an ambiguous contract, which is where we're going. So I would, I would sell it for one point one and leave it up to the, as a minimum price. And of course, that's telling them that we'll take one point one and leave it up to the, up to the staff to negotiate the items as to what stays and what goes. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to sell for one point one million with the condition that the staff come to agreement with items that are in question regarding fixtures, so on and so forth.
Yeah, got it.
And I'm gonna second with a comment. You know, the truest statement is what the applicant just said. You can get all the appraisals in the world, but something's only worth what someone's willing to pay for it. So my job is to try to get the best I can for the city. We tried that, and as the mayor pointed out, this is how sunshine works. Very difficult to negotiate. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, I had a motion and a second. The motion for clarity was to sell the property with the further staff negotiations on FF and E for one point one million dollars, as was the proposal, and congruent with the last meeting. City Clerk, if you. Paul, if you have any other comments, sorry. City Clerk, color roll.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sachs?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
As the proud new owners of that property. Look forward to seeing the growth in the community genuinely. Don't, don't take any of this as a, I think we're all behind you a hundred percent. You would do the same thing if you were in our role. In fact, you'd probably push harder, honestly, but. Alright. Eight A, ordinance twenty-five twenty-one, second reading of an ordinance which would amend fire pension benefits. I have a, is this related, I have something else on my desk. Did anybody else get this or no?
Yes.
Alright. Somebody want to explain what this is before we dive in? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Hi. So let me read the title first. Ordinance number twenty-five twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach, amending the city of New Smyrna Beach firefighters' retirement system, adopted pursuant to ordinance number one sixteen eleven as subsequently amended. Amending section one definitions, amending section six benefit amounts and eligibility, amending section twenty-five military service prior to employment, amending section twenty-seven prior fire service, providing for a new section twenty-eight defined contribution component, providing for codification, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. So at the last, at the last commission meeting, Commissioner Hartman asked why I had no impact for section twenty-eight. We went back and we reviewed that, and in my error, I was looking just at the excess tax. I wasn't looking at the changes with the initial portion. So there will be a cost of forty-four thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars initially that first year, then plus or minus whatever the excess happens to be after that. Each year after that, it will just depend on, on what the excess taxes that we gain are.
Okay. So everyone should have received an amended document, and it had that, a section twenty-eight added with what she just shared. And Kelly, if we can just make sure this is also in the, in the minutes. Alright, any discussion, oh, sorry, this is a public hearing, so Heather, we're gonna hear from the public. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item, just this fire pension item? Seeing none, we'll close that discussion by the commission? Or do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five twenty-one?
So move.
Second.
Second. Oh, sorry.
I had a second already, thank you. City Clerk, if you could call the role, please.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sachs?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, item eight B, special exception, public hearing for the approval for a mini warehouse, an additional mini warehouse storage facility at all aboard stores thirteen fifty North Dixie. City will now conduct a public hearing to consider the approval of this. And I assume you have to read it first, but title only, or do we just jump right on the special hearing? Yeah, sorry, alright. Mr. Fields, do you have a report?
Yes, a brief report. This is a request to expand an existing approved special exception for all board storage at thirteen fifty North Dixie Freeway. A special exception to allow the mini warehouse storage used on the parcel was approved by the city commission in twenty seventeen. The site plan associated with that had a total of approximately eighty-two thousand square feet of storage area to be constructed in two phases. Phase one, at about thirty-three thousand square feet, is built. Phase two is not built and was originally shown to have approximately forty-eight thousand square feet in one- and two-story buildings. What's before you tonight is to expand that special exception approval to approximately fifty-eight thousand square feet and to combine those buildings into a single three-story storage building. So it's an increase by approximately ninety-eight hundred square feet. City commission approval of this increase is required because the expansion is more than fifteen hundred square feet per our, our land development regulations. The, a detailed review of the special exception criteria is in the staff report. It meets all of that criteria. Kelly, if you could go to the next drawing here, just to illustrate. So right there, so this is what was originally approved. This is US one along the bottom. This is Industrial Park Avenue. This is Pont Street. The yellow is built today, and the blue is what was originally planned for that phase two. So that's, that's what was originally approved. If you could go to the next page, please. And this is what is proposed, is to take away all that blue and build just a single three-story building right here in the yellow, and that, some elevations are shown on the next page. There those are. The applicant has provided this little better rendering here. There is a thirty-five-foot height limit. It's not clear that this would be able to meet that, so they may need to trim that back some. So, but this is more modern version of storage that we're seeing in other places, as opposed to the one-story, many garages, the larger indoor buildings is what's proposed here. As far as the landscaping on the site, the, one of the conditions for storage for the special exception is that where they front thoroughfares, a, a twenty-foot wide extensively landscaped buffer is required. The applicant has proposed, and we recommend maintaining that twenty-foot buffer along the frontage of this building along Pont Street. The planning and zoning board met on May third to review this and voted seven to zero to recommend approval. Again, with that extensive landscaping along the frontage. What that means is that trees that would normally be two and a half inches minimum are required to be four. Shrubs that are eighteen inches minimum are required to be twenty-four inches in height when, when planted. Staff recommend the city commission approve the special exception with the condition that an extensively landscaped twenty-foot landscape buffer between the use and the road frontage along Ponce be required as a condition of approval.
Alright. Do we have questions for staff of their report? And then we'll hear from the applicant and then the public, and then we'll discuss and debate. Yes?
Brian, I believe P and Z also included that the vegetation be maintained in perpetuity? Was that? Or was that something else that?
I think that was, we had that discussion, we, about how to, how to enforce that going forward.
Right.
Does it fall under our normal property maintenance standards?
Okay. I mean, that's just something that kind of slipped through the cracks before, so that I want to make sure that, that that doesn't happen again, you know?
Okay.
It's so eerie that you just brought that up. I literally finished just writing maintenance of lands, I couldn't finish the word landscape before you said it. Because I was, because I was driving on forty-four, and I noticed that an older development's been there for probably ten years, but they got a few of their larger oak trees that we probably required them to plant are, are basically dead now. And so I was gonna ask Brian later in this meeting about how do we, how do we make sure? I know in Port Orange, I can tell you, I ran a business there for a while, and they were death on that. They came and counted the plants. And if you were supposed to have had twenty when they approved you, you better have twenty, and if not, you were fined. So it's a little tangential to this, but we gotta start fixing it at some point, so.
So I don't think we have that mechanism in place on, to apply to all projects. You could make that as a condition of this special exception approval, though.
Okay. Alright, any other questions of staff on this item? Again, just kind of questions, comments at this item for staff, and then we'll hear from the app.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. Did you receive any letters of objection from residents in the vicinity? No. The three-story building has a different setback, is that, am I correct?
No difference in setback, although it would be further away from the residential lots to the south, which is one advantage of this plan. Originally is eleven feet, this would be a little over two hundred feet from the residences to the south, or to the west, excuse me.
And just the one comment, when this project came before us, it was promised that there would be lush landscaping. Possibly my definition of lush was not the same as the applicant. So I would like to see us be very strong on that, that provision. I, I don't know, can they increase the landscaping on the industrial and Dixie side as well? Can we enforce that?
It's not subject to this request. It is fair and a special exception to apply different terms. The extensively landscaped does have numbers to it, so that's why we use that term with, with those conditions.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Alright, if no other questions for staff, we will hear from the applicant. Clint Storch has come back from.
First of all, I gotta tell you, and this is truly from the bottom of my heart, it is so nice to see everybody again. It's been a while. So I gotta tell you, in this case, this is a, this is a special exception that's already been granted as a, as a use itself. Special exception, of course, is a permitted use. And this is because of the fact that this special exception has been successful, that we're now looking at doing phase two, which of course is the phase that was previously approved and had a site plan on it. And to answer Commissioner Sachs's question, I mean, the bottom line is, at that point, as you know, we had site plans that had four buildings, I think, on this phase two. We're moving this to one building. And the four buildings, several of the buildings were very close to that neighborhood. And so we're moving them away from that neighborhood entirely. That's the, the two hundred feet. To answer Commissioner Hartman's question, absolutely. We have no problem with the idea of putting a stipulation in for maintenance so that if, if a, if any plant material dies, it will be required to be replaced. Within, what do you say, Brian, sixty days, thirty days? What do you, what's, what's appropriate?
I like thirty days.
Okay, yeah.
For thirty minutes.
I thought you might. I, I feel like I'm negotiating in public with the, you know, this is the ceiling. So that's, that's fine. So we would, we would put a provision in that, that if any, if any plant material dies, that we would replace it within thirty days. And that way, it'll keep that landscaping in place as we're going through the things. We, again, although the, the extensive landscaping and the requirements of the, of the planning board, which again was a seven O in, in favor of, I would also stipulate to those conditions and to the conditions of the staff on the landscaping for this item. And so if there's any other questions, I mean, I, okay.
Wait, no, there's normally like four hundred slides we gotta see, Clint, I don't know.
No, I'm not, I'm not bringing any slides today.
Alright. Slide game, COVID really hurt us. I was, I was gonna make a joke about you, you have, you've come back from somewhere where land use attorneys go. I don't, I don't know.
I have a tan.
What's that? You have a tan, alright. Commissioner Colode.
Okay, obviously, I reviewed the site plan. I've inspected the area out there. I did note that the original site plan, as you said, did have additional buildings on it, which are not going to be constructed. One of which was going to be approximately eleven feet off an adjoining residential property. Your new plan is silent on that portion of the property. And I would like to see, and that building was partially a buffer against the activity.
That's true.
And right now, for approximately the first forty feet along that residential property line, there is vehicles that back up right to the line. I would like to see an amendment to the site plan that would provide a ten-foot buffer strip along the common property line between your property and the first house on Ponce. We face, the house on the left facing your property from Ponce. We face, the house on the left facing your property from Ponce.
Landscape buffer.
A landscape buffer in, in the same.
Yeah. And, and that's, that makes perfect sense. You're absolutely correct. They built, the building was previously going to provide some buffer. We can agree that that would also be a stipulation, that we provide a ten-foot landscape buffer along that area.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I think it would be a little bit of help for the neighbors.
Well, and I gotta tell you, sometimes it's, when you come back and look at these things again, as long as you're making improvements, that's always good. And don't forget, we have reduced the square footage on this property, this buildings, by thirteen thousand square feet by taking those other buildings away and putting it into three stories. So there is some advantages to this.
Okay.
So.
Also.
Go ahead, sorry.
As I was looking at your really nice exhibits there, one which is not up there, now I notice you have a very large pole sign near the intersection of industrial and, and the highway, Route one. As you, as you may recall, a number of years ago, the commission passed an ordinance that said such signs had to be removed. There was a time limit, which is approaching very soon.
November.
Yes. Would your, would your applicant agree to take that sign down?
If what you're looking for is for us to take that sign and turn it into a monument sign now as part of this special exception, yes.
Okay, as long as it doesn't interfere with the site distances at the corner.
It's gonna have to, it's gonna have to go down eventually anyway.
Yes.
And I'm not a big believer in pole signs. I prefer to have monument signs anyway, so that's, this is, this is fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that would be a condition of approval.
It would be.
Brian, I haven't been, he's agreed to about a dozen things already, so can, are you making sure?
I got him.
All right. Other questions or comments for the applicant?
No, thank you.
All right. At the P and Z, I mean, it was, it's perfectly clear is that we're reducing the total number of buildings, we're moving them further away from the residential neighborhood, which I think was good.
Yes.
And it gives you a, rather than seeing a single-story building off of US one, you're gonna look at something more attractable, something like this.
That's exactly correct.
So I think it's, it was a great improvement. My landscaping in perpetuity, I wasn't necessarily looking for a thirty-day turnaround because code will take a little longer than that.
That was my mistake.
If something happens. And I don't want to get into the argument about whether it's dead, not dead, it can't survive, it's just a winter freeze or something like that.
I, I think between Brian and I, we can work out notice. As long as you give us notice of the, of the dead.
Yes, yeah.
We'll, we'll replace it within thirty days of that notice. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because you're right, there's an issue sometimes is whether these things are coming back or not.
Yeah, I don't want to get into interpretations and get into that argument. I just think at some point in time, we mutually agree that, you know, it needs to be replaced.
Agreed. And by the way, I have to give staff credit for some of the, the input on the, on the architecture as well, trying to make something a little nicer as part of this.
So we have an, so I'm a visual guy on this kind of stuff. And I see something here, an example elevation, which is, which is good. I mean, it's kind of, it's, you know, a bit modern, but it is, it is what it is. Is that roughly what I'll see when it's built? Or am I gonna drive by it and go, what, what just happened?
Yes.
That's not what I saw.
Yeah. The, the glass was what was so important, is my understanding. And Andy, why don't you come up here and introduce yourself? Sandy Clark.
Hi, I'm Andy Clark. I'm the president of All Aboard Storage, and we're based in Port Orange, and we're really glad to be here in New Smyrna. And yes, it, it kind of looks like an office building, basically. It has glass and the, and architectural features that make it look more like an office building. That's kind of the new way that these type of.
Yeah.
Three-story storage buildings look. We want to keep the same, some of the architectural feature, architectural features that was on Taylor Storage with the shutter look and the Florida vernacular look, so it matches and, and everything that hopefully.
Yeah.
If that answers your question.
Yeah.
And those are actual elevations.
I guess I just, you, you see, you see high-quality materials here. You see brick, you see stone, you see, you know, things that are, are high-quality building materials. And then oftentimes, what gets built is, you know, a stucco building, and it has zero architectural appeal to anyone, and so.
And again, if you look around the, the first other one, it does show the glass and everything else is part of this. So that's on there. That's correct.
Go ahead.
When I look through the glass, what am I actually looking at? What I see is lighting and what appears to be doors. But what, what actually am I looking at?
Yeah, the, the, the glass does show storage units through, through the glass if you, but it would be kind of hard to see it because we're pretty far from US one. And there's another, there's a parking lot of neighboring buildings, so anyway.
So what, going off what the mayor brought up, I look at something, it could be attractive and it could not. A lot of times, these nice, pretty presentations, they look great. But I can tell you right now, when I drive North Causeway and I look at Riverwalk, all I see are fluorescent bulbs, bright fluorescent bulbs in the stairwells. Terrible design. So my concern is, we're gonna have two stories of glass with fluorescent lighting, which is very harsh, and some kind of gray garage-type industrial door. So, and, and what I'm seeing is, I'm seeing different elevations, dips in the building, different sizes. I, I want to make sure that's what we're getting. I want to, I don't want just a big, flat building with a bunch of fluorescent lighting, two stories of fluorescent lighting.
And again.
So I'd like some detail as to what exactly it is I'm looking at in reality.
The detail that we have provided is, is what you're getting. So that is exactly, if you'll see, in fact, if we can go a little further down, Kelly. All these, there you, there you go, a little further down. There we go. So you do see the difference, the different, this is not a straight, flat building like you're concerned about. And so there are different architectural features, there's, you're not gonna see a flat stucco building. This is what you're gonna see.
So this would traditionally come in a site plan.
Is that correct?
These actual, but these, but these, these, the site plan is not developed yet, right? You can't tell me exactly how big that front building is. It looks like the, the building behind it dips back and then there's some architectural, much more like the Hampton Inn as opposed to.
Yeah, actually, the, the building site plan is pretty much developed and, and the building design is pretty much developed. So that's why we're able to show you this.
Yeah, the dimensions are on, on there also.
Okay.
Everything. And that's the, the bottom left one is the view from US one. And then, and so, you know, they're labeled as to each, you know, it's the, you know, each side.
So the, so the lighting inside, in other words, I'm driving by and I'm looking at two stories of glass, and am I just seeing stark fluorescent lighting with the roll-up doors? In other words, I mean, it looks nice from a distance in the picture. What I'm scared is I'm gonna look at some kind of institutional type industrial interior.
Andy is softening the lighting somewhat.
Right, right. And it'll be interior lighting only, and we can make sure it's of a certain, you know, lumens and everything, so it's not too, not to correct, brighten us and everything.
We can use soft white LED bulbs as opposed to fluorescent. How's that?
Yeah.
I'm not an expert in lighting. So, but I think you know where I'm getting with this. I want soft lighting.
And I think we can, I think we can.
And, and I don't necessarily want it so bright, it's gonna be like the lighthouse for the airport at night.
No. There's no reason for that, and so we can provide for that.
But, you know, this is an example of, we're gonna get something in the end that we like, or we're gonna be like, darn, they did it to us again.
Yeah.
So the point is.
I, I've got, and I've got to tell you, and your staff has been very good at working together to make sure you have something exactly what you're looking for. And like I say, this plan here is what we're putting up. So if you like this plan, after working together on this, this is what we're putting up. If lighting is the only issue, we can do soft lighting and make sure it's not fluorescent.
But I'm just, right. You asked me if I like this, if I, if I, if I like this, I'm gonna like it, but that's what I'm trying to clarify, what exactly it is that I'm looking at. So my concerns, and I'm gonna follow up with staff on it, I don't want hard lighting, very bright, two stories of glass looking industrial as we pass by. I like where you're going with this. I'm not looking to reinvent your project, but there's some minor details that are gonna be important, that are gonna make a big difference in the aesthetics of this. Lighting is a big.
And I greatly understand it. If you want us to put, that we'll use soft white lighting internally, I can put that as a condition, but it may be going a little too much. But we're gonna, but I'm telling you that's what we're gonna do. And Andy is here to confirm that.
Yeah, we wanted, we wanted to look good also. I mean, you know.
Nothing personal. We've been down this road a lot of times, and we've had a lot of people tell us what we think we're getting and then we don't. And we're not calling them up and.
Brian, can we, can we add a condition that we'll be using soft white lighting internally?
It's up to the commission.
That's right.
That's fair to add as a special exception.
What I'm gonna do is I'm going to talk with Brian at a later date.
Fair enough.
But I'm just letting you know that I'm gonna, what I'm gonna be looking for from staff, which is making sure we don't get a hard industrial look, two stories of glass. This could be done good, or it can be done darn.
I, and, and I appreciate that, and I understand that.
This, Brian, the site plan where kind of those more, we call minute details, I don't mean that insultingly, because I agree with you on everything you just said, but those minute details, is that, that's coming back to staff? That comes back to us? Where does that, where does that go?
It would go to staff and then the Planning and Zoning Board for final approval.
That's right. I've gotta go to the planning board anyway.
Yeah, but not, but not to us. So the, so you, to the applicant's point, you know, if, if we like what you see here, then you like what you see. This is a two-D rendering, you know, forty-five feet away at, you know, pixelated, like, yeah, I think I like what I see, but I'm not an expert in being able to visualize that versus a finished product. That's why pictures are great, but then all of a sudden, is that picture exactly what we're getting and, you know, how it's, how it's.
Yeah.
So that, that's where we, we struggle sometimes.
I understand. And again, the, the, the flat drawings are what you're getting.
Yeah.
So that's for sure.
And that's what I'm saying, the flat drawings are what we're getting, but what, what I'm spending most of the time looking at is the other thing.
The one in the right hand with the light, that's an example, but it does show how we're using the light.
Yeah.
I understand Jason's concerns regarding.
Yeah, and I've, and I've seen this form of, I mean, this is, this is how they're building these. I've seen, I've seen this form of, and there's one over on I four, I think, as you drive past at some point, there's one that looks a lot like this.
There's one over in Celebration also, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's, that exists. So I'm okay with the, the basic fundamental point, but again, it's, it's like everything else. With a few tweaks, you can make this look like a million dollars, or we can make it look really, really poorly. And it's, and it's really at no cost even to, to the applicant. It's really just how we design it, that.
Agreed.
The, the aesthetics and, and putting the time into have the.
I, I will tell you, one of the advantages we have in this case is that Andy and all aboard have done some amazing stuff. In fact, why don't you tell them about the one in Port Orange with the wedding chapel and everything else?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I grew up in Port Orange, just north of here, and my fam, it's a family business, and we have the Clark Office Building, which is on US one. It's a butt-glass building, and we also have the Estate on Halifax, which is a wedding venue. And so, so, yeah, details are important to me, too, for sure, because we want to make something that looks good and, you know, protects our reputation and everything. So we'll make sure that it's, that it's looking good.
Those locations are good examples of projects that are done well.
Yeah, that's detail. It's all in the details, for sure.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure.
All right, other questions or comments for the applicant? Yes, go ahead. Sorry, you're right.
That's okay. So would you consider a tinted glass for those features in the front corner of the building to contain that nuisance light is a problem for me, as well as noise? The question, the facility is open with access, secured access, twenty-four, twenty-four hours?
Actually, no. No, the access is more like, like six AM to nine PM. Yeah.
Okay.
We're not, not twenty-four hours, no.
So, so noise wouldn't be a problem at night?
No.
And it's also internal, so that's, it's inside.
Right, it's all enclosed.
I'm sorry, then I couldn't hear.
I'm sorry, I apologize. It's also internal, it's inside of a building, whereas typically you have many warehouses where you're outside. This is all internal inside the building.
If you could contain that light, including outside lighting and the inside lighting from the building, from the front to the site, it would make me very happy.
Absolutely. Okay, yeah, that's.
Light, light pollution.
Right, right, absolutely, yeah. We'll make sure it's, it's decorative, you know, that's all.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's a public hearing. Let's hear from the public, and then we'll finalize our discussion. Thank you. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by the commission. Do you have?
I make a motion to approve with, but I did not keep track of all of them.
We're just gonna, we're gonna point to Brian for the list of things.
Okay. Make. Go ahead. Right now, there are four conditions. Replace dead plant material within thirty days of notification. There's a ten-foot landscape buffer to be installed along the west side boundary line. And just for information, there is also a six-foot fence requirement there, but the condition is a ten-foot landscape buffer along that west property line. Is, another condition is replace the pole sign with the monument sign. And just for clarity there, I would suggest prior to certificate of occupancy of the building or earlier if required by our land development regulations.
Yeah.
So right now, it's November. If it gets extended, it would be to either that new deadline or prior to CO.
And the lighting.
And then the last item, we also have the standard condition of the twenty-foot lands, extensively landscaped buffer between the, the building and the street. And then the last item is that lighting to be soft white LED bulbs without a hard industrial look.
Yeah, or some sort of, some sort of.
Tinting.
Tinting, yeah, right.
I'll, I'll second that.
Yeah, I, I do want to clarify one thing, the, on the sign, and again, we've, we've agreed to take that sign off the pole and make it monument, but the goal is to keep our sign that we've got and just turn that into a monument sign.
Correct.
Take away the pole. Yeah, lower it.
Replace the pole sign with the monument sign.
Right. And we'll build a, we'll build a monument base that's, that's appropriate.
Well, just on that, I mean, the monument signs, there's a visibility triangle that we've got to be careful of with monument signs. So I, I don't know that we can, I don't necessarily want to guarantee the location.
Yeah, I understand.
Because we want to make sure that visibility triangle is met.
We will work with them on the.
The monument sign will have to meet specifications.
Meet the specifications for the monument sign, yeah.
We have, and I know we have to go through a site plan, but our intent is to keep the sign and just turn it into a monument sign. I just want to clarify that.
As long as that meets the specifications of a monument sign and the location is right. Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So we had a motion, we had a second.
Second.
Commissioner Colletti. I hear no other discussion.[1664.51]
I hear no other discussion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's approved. Thank you. Look forward to, uh, growing your business in our city. Thank you. HC, Ocean Gate Commerce Center. Quasi judicial proceeding, approval of the final plat, development plans, et cetera. We'll hear first from the city, Brian, and then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll hear from the public, just as we did last time. Brian?
Ocean Gate Commerce Center, for references, the overall site plan in front of you here is a request for approval of final plat, development plans, and proportionate share agreement approval for the proposed Phase Two of the existing Ocean Gate PUD for the development of ten proposed commercial lots and associated infrastructure. The entire PUD is a one hundred and eighty-one acres. Phase One was just a racetrack project. This Phase Two is forty-seven acres. The ten new commercial lots in Phase Two range in size from just under one acre to over eight acres. This Phase Two plan was approved by the City Commission conceptually in October of 2020 as part of the PUD amendment. One key issue that was discussed at that time was a slight increase in the allowable floor area ratio from the previous maximum of zero-point-five to zero-point-six for only Lot Seven, which is the future Holiday Inn on this site right here, which is the subject of our next agenda item. Phase Two plat includes the infrastructure of a second new access to State Road Forty-four. That is a left-in, right-in, and right-out movement that would be permitted there. Also included is the preservation of over ten acres of existing wetlands within two, um, two tracks and a thirty-foot perimeter buffer area and plantings. The traffic impact analysis for the project, for the entire one hundred and eighty-one acre PUD has been reviewed and approved by the city, Volusia County, and FDOT. The result of that analysis is the proportionate share agreement. This is an agreement between Ocean Gate Commerce Center, the city, and Volusia County. The total prop share amount is one-point-eight-one-four million dollars, with four-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars to be paid as part of Phase Two, and that remainder will be prorated based on the future phases of the Ocean Gate project. The purpose of the prop share agreement is to provide funding to mitigate the traffic impacts from the development that caused deficiencies in the surrounding roadway network. Those funds must be used for, for the purpose of installing improvements within the project's traffic impact area. That impact area is, is defined in the traffic impact analysis that we have on file. There's a number of roadways that include that impact area. It's up to three miles from the project location. Staff has worked with Volusia County to make it a priority that those funds, the one-point-eight million, be, be put into projects that are in this immediate area and benefit and relieve traffic congestion in New Smyrna Beach. At the March One, twenty-twenty-one Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the board voted seven-zero to recommend approval. Staff recommends approval of this Ocean Gate Phase Two development plans, plat, and proportionate share agreement.
Okay. Does any member of the commission or the applicant wish to question Mr. Fields on his testimony? Mr. Colletti?
Well, I appreciate the clarification on that impact area. So it does extend down, and it was established in the traffic study.
Yes.
Good. That was my concern.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Brian, are the features described, uh, for traffic impact mediation? Like, do they have to, you know, say, we're gonna give you a light, we're gonna give you an extra lane?
The specific projects are not identified. It's Volusia County, you know, administers the funding to their needs. We did specifically request to the county to target these funds to the State Road Forty-four at Mission Road intersection improvements. They didn't commit to that. They did commit to, uh, making it a priority to target New Smyrna Beach projects, though.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, do we have any, is that the best we can do? I guess we're like the better term with the county. Can we attach any stronger?
Typically, prop share is not, in this case, is, is regional, so, um, the answer is no. We typically don't see it on a specific intersection at the time of the agreement.
Yeah, okay. Any other que, yes, go ahead.
I'm just gonna assume this is appropriate time. State war, State Road Forty-four is gonna be widened at some point, and what I don't want to end up having is a situation where, as we grow and this is put in, we have the same problems that we're having with the existing landscape buffers, utility easements. This is our opportunity to make sure that doesn't happen. All undeveloped property, there's a lot of property there. I want to make sure that when the wi, when the road gets widened, and then utilities have to be maybe moved back, that there's sufficient and lush landscape vegetation, not for now when the project is done. But later on down the road, after Forty-four has been widened, if it opens up a lane or two. So, I just don't want to create something now that it doesn't have the staying power with the landscape buffering. I want to plant stuff, have it grow, have it grow into mature trees and dense vegetative landscaping that looks nice. I, I can't tell you what forty-five feet means. I, I'm not an expert. I just can tell you what, what I want. Someone has to put in the correct size buffers to compensate and plan for that.
I, I think that is taken into consideration with the utilities being in easements that do have planting restrictions in them to prevent large plants from being in there and being impacted. So, I think the utilities are set to be in the right place for that future widening, at least in this area. Other areas may, may be a little different story, but, um, I think this is set up for a potential future widening with minimal impact on those outside facilities.
Right.
I haven't seen that cross-section to know for sure, but I think there's, that planning is in place.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about that.
Thought you were still going back and forth. Any other questions, Brian? All right, if not, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the commission, for the record, Mark Watts of the law firm of Cobb Cole, 231 North Woodland Boulevard, Deland. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. Um, don't really have much of a presentation. I wanted to thank your staff, Brian, and, and the rest of, of his group, Jeff, Jeff Gove, and everybody that's worked on this. We have spent, um, if you look in your staff materials, this has been, um, in process since about November of 2019, as we've worked through a number of different, uh, technical revisions. And also, uh, you, you recall, you know, as, as Brian noted a few minutes ago, we were here in October with some revisions to the PD to actually accommodate how the overall design was coming together. So, um, we have representatives from Ocean Gate Commerce Center here, uh, this evening with me, uh, in addition to Mike Hale, the project engineer, so we're happy to answer any other questions. Um, again, thank you for all the time that, that your staff has committed to working with us to, to bring this to you this evening. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any other, uh, specific questions you have.
Any questions for the applicant? Or comments? All right. Yes, go ahead.
So I think previously when we discussed this, um, I had mentioned, um, that you guys would work with the police department on possible prevention cameras, that sort of thing going forward, that, that if, if it was determined that it may be a good area to put a camera up for whatever reasons, that you would help support the infrastructure prior to going into this stuff. Um, so I'm taking that, that's, you still have that commitment to work with?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we agree to that, and as we keep coming forward with the various site plans on the lots, I think that'll be a continuing, uh, aspect that we'll keep looking at.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. If no other questions for the applicant?
Thank you for your time.
Don't go far.
I'll, I'll make a round.
We'll come back for you. Uh, well, I hear from members of the public. Any members of the public wish to testify on this item, this item? Seeing none. We'll now hear any closing remarks from the city?
Just one clarification, because it comes up so often, that the proposed wave pool is in Phase Three. As we understand, is not part of this phase, so just your approval tonight is not associated with the, the wave pool, um, but that is a, a future phase.
Okay. I remember, and this is probably a question for staff slash maybe Commissioner Colletti. At the last time this was before us, we had kind of extensive debate over the, the FAR, and I know that's in the next item. Does that impact this item at all? Because there was something about the width of the road, and they were picking up some density because of the road width, and you were, you were all over it, Commissioner Colletti, and I just want to make sure that didn't get lost, because it was a good catch last time.
Uh, that was addressed. Uh, if they, if it had remained, uh, public streets, then it, then it could have become an issue, but they've agreed to have the, uh, the side roads, the one that would service most of those properties. They're maintaining them as private, so I have no difficulty with the floor area ratio. I, I think they took care of that.
Okay. All right, but that, and the, the, the actual FAR is in eight D, is that correct? Brian, this one doesn't really address the
That's correct. That is Lot Seven only. That's in the MDA and in the next site plan.
Gotcha. All right, so if no other closing comments from the city, if no, any closing comments or redress or any of those technical terms? All right. We'll now consider the quasi judicial hearing closed, and the commission will now consider it. Do you have a motion on this item, gentlemen?
I will make a motion to approve, as submitted.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight D. We'll now conduct a quasi judicial hearing on this one, which is the development plans for the Holiday Inn Express and Suites to be located in the Ocean Gate Commercial subdivision. We'll first hear again from the city.
Yes, so keeping this map in mind, and Kelly's gonna bring up the site plan, so this is Lot Seven. This is a Class Three site plan approval for a one-hundred-and-twenty-two-room Holiday Inn Express and Suites hotel facility within one five-story building containing a total of about seventy-two thousand square feet of enclosed area. And this is the site plan of the Holiday Inn. If you remember, just from the previous overall plan, it's right up State Road Forty-four to the north. This is a two-point-eight-six acre Lot Seven. Um, it's, again, part of the Ocean Gate Commerce Center PUD Phase Two. The, one condition on the MDA amendment was that this, the final approval step for this site plan, which would normally have gone to the Planning and Zoning Board, is now to the City Commission. It did go to the Planning and Zoning Board for a recommendation, which I'll get to in a moment, but that's why this item is here tonight. So the site plan shows, shows the hotel building surrounded by parking lot, driveway areas, perimeter landscaping. There's no onsite stormwater that is collected onsite and piped to the master stormwater system. The hotel is listed as a permitted use within the PUD MDA that was first approved and recorded in 2013. The adjoining Lot Six, which is shown here just to the east, um, is within the same tax parcel. It's tentatively proposed for a future restaurant that has not yet been submitted to the city for review. As shown on this plan, these two lots and the hotel/restaurant uses will be connected by internal driveways and have a small shared parking area, as is permitted by the MDA. All of the internal roadways will be privately maintained by the developer. The, again, back to the FAR, um, the City Commission did approve increasing the floor area ratio of this proposed Lot Seven only to a zero-point-six, and what is proposed here has an FAR of zero-point-five-nine-four, so it does comply with that requirement. Kelly, if you go to the next page, please, to the color elevation. So the building design has been modified during the review process based on staff input for compliance with our architectural standards. Some of those items include use of earth-toned colors and natural materials. The facade and roofline break up by using different heights, planes, recesses on all building sides, um, as well as providing some angle to the front canopy detail. So, um, what you see here is a long side that would face State Road Forty-four. I would point out, as has been noted by others, that the windows are shown in blue here. That's probably not how they will look in real life. That's, um, probably just more of the reflection or what the architect put in for this rendering. Site lighting onsite is pole lighting. Um, it is Dahmer-directed. Um, it has minimal to no lighting shown to extend off the site. At the Planning and Zoning Board meeting on June seventh, the board voted six-zero to recommend the City Commission approve this proposed Class Three site plan. Staff also recommends approval on the basis that the site plan meets the LDR and the applicable MDA requirements. Mayor.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions of staff on their testimony?
A quick one, Mayor. Uh, Brian, can, can we encourage or force the applicant to use Florida-friendly landscaping where possible?
We don't have that requirement in, we, we do mention Florida-friendly landscaping in our LDR, LDR. It's not something that is extensively required, and, you know, it depends on how it's interpreted. We have an approved tree list that is, is, uh, has extensive amount of Florida-friendly landscaping, but there is no exact mix specified in the LDR or the MDA. That is under review right now and is going to Planning and Zoning Board in July, though.
And if the applicant is still here, could we, keep that in mind, uh, I, I would appreciate it.
Can we, can we ask for it, and the most they can say is no? Or can we not even ask for it?
Uh, it can be requested, certainly.
Okay.
I may have a problem with that.
All right.
I want a list of what is considered Florida landscaping, and I want to see what it would look like. I don't want, I mean, we may be giving a tremendous opportunity for them to whiff on the landscaping completely. With Florida-friendly landscaping, that doesn't take any water. So, I just want to make sure good intent end up with a really bad execution. So before we start saying what they can do, I'd like P and Z to see that come back before us. I would like to see what this landscaping is, what it looks like, how it grows out, before we start telling people they need to or should put it in.
It's a, it's a fair point. To, to your point earlier, you talked about the lush, you wanted to see the lush landscaping, and I have seen native landscaping that does not appear lush. Doesn't require as much water, maybe what we should be doing, but definitely doesn't appear lush. So, a fair catch that we want to make sure we know exactly what we're getting into if we do that, but to your point, probably the direction we should move. And staff, it sounds like, is moving that direction.
We do have a landscape plan here. We are moving that direction. What we, I can't tell you is the exact percentage of that proposed landscaping that qualifies as Florida-friendly, unless either the applicant or Jeff knows that here. That's right, that's the landscape plan right there. So, we'd have to look at the plant lists and, so.
I don't want a bunch of weeds and scrubs, and then, and then, you know, we wanted, everyone wants nice landscaping, and we don't get that, but we save. It's, you know,
No, I didn't.
We need to make, that's a very conscious decision we need to make at the appropriate time, not approving a Holiday Inn.
Yeah.
And I, I would like to work with the applicant to, you know, come up with new ways to landscape, if they're willing. I'm certainly willing.
Yeah. All right, let's, let's hear if there's no other questions for staff. I'm hearing none, seeing none. All right, let's hear from the applicant, and then we'll hear from the public, and then we'll make closing remarks, so.
By the way, the landscape architect is here, so he could explain some of the landscaping.
All right.
And if they want to use palmetto bushes, they could come get all the mine they want.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, it's a great point. That's, that's Florida, it's definitely my yard friendly, so it seems pretty native, and yet it's not, uh, appealed, so. All right, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Darren Elke. My professional address is one forty-two East New York Avenue in Deland, the other end of State Road, the west end of State Road Forty-four in Volusia County. I was gonna say that I was just here to answer any questions, but I won't get away with that. I'll address the landscaping in just a moment. Uh, I just want to briefly, by way of background, tell you, uh, the Stoudler family, who is the principal behind this project, and also, hopefully eventually, not too long after something, a restaurant in the next parcel, are quality family. Um, old timers have a connection, uh, to this part of Florida and have done a number of projects, and they just do good work. We've got Connie Silver, um, project engineer here. Um, I don't see Agar, but, uh, the collage companies are standing by, lined up, excellent quality builder that is on standby, just ready to go. So, um, they are eager to have this approved, and you'll see this project as soon as the, the site is prepared by the developer. They're ready to rock and roll, so to speak. Um, they deliver quality projects on the landscaping. Even before I talk specifically about the landscaping, um, they have made the comment, and I mean this as a compliment, that, wow, uh, New Smyrna Beach are really sticklers about, you know, making sure things are, every detail is covered and everything looks good. So while that may frustrate the person trying to get through the process and building it, um, for the people to have to look at the building, your staff is doing a good thing, frustrating though it may be to the developer. The landscaping. Um, there is a landscaping plan. It has been clearly reviewed. There was back and forth, and, and it complies with your code. The Holiday Inn, you know, has certain requirements that they require in terms of the aesthetic. They can't, to, to, uh, the commissioner's comment, they can't have something that looks like weeds and grass, even though it may not, they don't, unfortunately, they don't care how much water is being used. They want it to, to look nice. I, what, you know, I'm on the spot here, because I wasn't aware this question was gonna come up. What I would tell you is they're, they're nice folks. They would work with you on anything that is going to meet Holiday Inn's requirements in terms of aesthetic appeal, that it looks nice, that doesn't require slowing the project down, because they've been at it for quite some time. I mean, that they'd be happy if there's something they can do that qualifies as Florida-friendly. I'm sure they would be happy to do it. So long as they didn't have to submit a new application, was handled through staff along the way, they'd be happy to help, so long as it, it looks good. And I know that wasn't a very clear answer to your question. Um, I would say, from a personal perspective, understanding a little bit about what it takes to develop a code and comply with the code and the law of unintended consequences, that, um, if we want to incorporate more Florida-friendly landscaping into development, then we have to do that in a thoughtful manner and really, you know, plan for it through code amendments. Anything else I can answer for you?
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, and on the landscaping, you know, that's, we'll, we'll see where that lands as far as when the motion comes forward, so no action required at this time. We'll see where that lands. All right, if no other questions for the applicant, don't go far. We may need you back. Uh, the public, any members of the public wish to testify on this item? Yes, sir. Seeing one.
Randy Herman, one oh-eight Street, Esther. Um, I haven't heard a mention of, um, green construction and/or solar. I don't know if this has been talked about. This is a major building. It's a major entrance to our community. And, uh, you know, we are certainly facing issues about power and about power and what the best ways to power. Is this part of the discussion, and can it be part of the discussion? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back to that. Any other members of the public wish to testify on this item? All right, seeing none. Brian, you want to address that one briefly?
No, no code requirements to achieve certain energy standards. It is something, as far as, you know, we had, had a lead building incentive program that we are looking to revisit and make it a little broader than just buildings going forward, but no, no minimum requirements.
Yeah, so to, to expand on that briefly, because Brian and Kaller and I just literally had this conversation, we, we have some green building incentives. They've never been taken advantage of anyone, which tells you they're not working. So, I've asked, can we, as a commission, talk at some point about how do we retool that and make it something where, when a project like this comes forward, there are enough kind of things that we've either required or incentivized that we do have some of those green initiatives coming forward and built into projects? It's a little tough to do on a project by project base. It has to be kind of at this overall level versus trying to do it, especially this part of a project versus early on, maybe trying to, trying to require it. So, it's not falling off the radar. Again, can't build it in right now at this point on this project, but we are looking at those green building codes and initiatives, so. All right. Any others on this item? Seeing none for public hearing, we'll close that, and we'll hear any closing remarks from the city and then the applicant.
Just one point on the timing of this, just to make sure that everybody understands, is that Holiday Inn's, you know, really eager to move forward, but there is some infrastructure that has to be done as part of that Ocean Gate development that we just reviewed. In order to get a building permit, they need to have stabilized access, fire protection in place, and then, in order to get a certificate of occupancy for this building, that site infrastructure has to be substantially complete that we reviewed for Ocean Gate. So, the sidewalk along 44, the landscape buffer, that all has to be in place before this building can be occupied.
Any closing comments from the applicant?
None, sir.
All right. We will close the quasi-judicial hearing and take any commission comments. Commissioner Clody?
Well, I will make a motion to approve it as submitted. We've had discussion on landscaping, but if you look at the landscaping plan, there's a big note on it says, prior to any changes being made, it has to be approved by our staff. So, I'm sure the applicant has heard how we would like to have Florida natural where appropriate, and I'm sure they'll work with us. But I do make a motion to approve with no conditions.
I have a motion to approve? Were, were any conditions that staff wanted to attach? All right, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? And so, just so I'm clear, this is the one where we granted previously the, the increase in the FAR, right, from .5 to the .6? Okay. All right. City Clerk, if you'd call the role?
Commissioner Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
I'm going to know on this one, just because of the FAR thing. All right, item is approved. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I make just one comment?
Sure.
Before I forget?
Yeah.
The, we were informed a while back that the state is going to be improving the entrance and exit ramps off of 995 on the 44, and I would like our staff to see if they've included any provisions for pedestrian access across there. It has across the ramps. Now that we're going to have a development there, we will conceivably have pedestrians, and I would like to make that a continuous way for them across, so I don't have to run across the ramps. Nothing to do with the applicant, not asking anything from them.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I quickly, Brian, so, speaking to Commissioner?
Clody we're going to call.
Commissioner Clody, I beg your pardon. So, that could include a traffic light possibly with a crosswalk? That wouldn't be out of the question?
At the 95 interchange?
Well, yeah, and I know it's close to the 95 interchange, but...
Not for pedestrians only. There are pedestrian improvements planned. The trail, there's a trail that actually goes through that corridor. We can bring back the latest plans, just kind of as an exhibit, so you can see what they have planned.
Yeah, I was just thinking of a way to cross, let's say somebody wanted, needed to go to Walmart for provisions or such.
You can cross that, the Ocean Gate Boulevard.
Yeah, right now, there's, to get to Walmart, there is pedestrian infrastructure there already.
There is.
At here, what Commissioner Clody was talking about, so, but 95, making sure going like east-west, there's, there's pedestrian access from east of 95 to west of 95 as you dump 95 traffic on the 44.
You know, Mayor, on the connectivity, at some points, this was about maybe, I don't know, five, six years ago, they talked about the connectivity crossing 95. They were talking about a bridge, you know, it was a pedestrian bike, bike path slash trail. But that was in a, in a phase, I think it was like a phase three, but you're looking at probably 10, 15 years down the road.
Don't hold your breath.
Yeah.
All right, item 8E, Old Mission Cove. This is also a quasi-judicial public hearing to review and approve a proposed subdivision plat. The city will now conduct this. We'll first hear same process, we'll hear from the city, then the applicant, and then the public, and then we'll all have a chance for closing comment. So, Brian?
This is a request for approval of the final development plans and plat for a proposed residential subdivision consisting of a total of 37 residential units within an 11.2 acre area, consisting of 25 total single-family lots and 12 townhouse lots. Kelly, if you could go to actually the previous page, I believe, is the area, just to orient us where we are. So, while she's pulling that up, a concurrent application has also been made, which is on for first reading tonight, which is for the vacation of two separate portions of currently platted right-of-way totaling about .7 acres. Majority of that is within this site, and a little above, little bit of that street vacation is outside of this. So, that's really concurrent. This is a new development with a plat, requires vacation of some existing right-of-way within this property. So, just to orient you, here's Old Mission, here's Ingham Road. The yellow outlines the area of this 11.2 acres.
Can you highlight on there, just for my benefit, what, where the vacations are? Is it the?
Yeah, it's right in here.
Okay, that was my first guess, and then, and where's the other one?
Jeff, is that the only one that's on site?
It's actually a part of the west part.
Part of the?
Right.
Yeah.
It's almost like the north line of the west parcel, and there's a tiny little 15-foot wide area that's immediately next to Ingham, to the east, on the east property line.
So, so there's two... That little thing, and then up, and then up there?
Yeah.
On the west parcel?
We actually have separate maps that show the areas proposed for vacation. Two separate parcels, and as Brian said, there's an area like 50 by 150 that is outside the subdivision boundaries. That's also proposed for vacation, part of the agreement with the applicant and the neighboring property owner.
Okay. All right, sorry, Brian, continue.
So, so Kelly, if you go to the next page there, so if that street vacation is not approved, this subdivision can't be built, so it's concurrent. First reading is tonight after this item, and then second reading would be at our next City Commission meeting. One thing complicating this site is it has three zoning designations, portions of R2, R3, and R4. The, the 37 proposed units, 12 are townhouses in two buildings, and that is the area at the southern end here. There's 12 townhome lots right here in the south end of the road. The project's in two phases, it's two plat sheets. First phase would be these first 12 townhomes and two single-family lots. There's a little turnaround area here for that Phase 1. When Phase 2 is built, it adds the remainder of all single-family lots and includes a roadway connection all the way up to Ingham Road. This site is mostly formerly cleared pasture area, but there are some large existing trees included within it, including a 40-inch historic oak tree being preserved by use of tree wells and retaining walls. No historic trees being removed. There are conservation areas and tracks shown on the plat for both wetland and tree protection. They combine to over an acre. So, while this application was submitted prior to the 2019 change where we adopted new rules for calculating net density based on excluding wetlands, this plan would still meet the current requirements with the nine-plus acres of existing uplands under those three zoning designations would allow almost twice the number of proposed units, which is, again, 37 here. So, it would comply with our current rules. At its regularly scheduled meeting on June 7th, the Planning and Zoning Board voted 6-0 to recommend approval. Staff recommend City Commission approve the Old Mission Cove Phase 1 and 2 subdivision plats and plans, subject to the following two conditions. First, again, is final approval of that concurrent vacation request for the two right-of-way areas, and second is final review and approval of the plats by the city's independent surveyor.
All right. So, gentlemen, so far, the only thing I want to make sure we're all clear on, Brian made it pretty clear, is item 9A. If we don't, if, if you're not in favor of 9A, then 8E can't happen without 9A. So, don't vote for this one, but against that one. Any questions of Brian of the city?
I'm going to do, but I'll hold off until I hear the applicant.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Ingram and Old Mission are currently county roads?
Correct.
Yes. At, at what point in time will we be required to take them over? Would this trigger any of that?
No.
Because they're, both are in need of a lot of maintenance.
The houses along Ingham Road?
It, will there be a, they don't actually access Ingram? They access the internal roadway?
They, they would front the internal roadway, correct.
All right.
Any other questions of staff? We'll hear from the applicant. All right, hearing none, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Commission, Mayor Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Richwood Avenue. I'm the design engineer and representing the applicant. As I alluded, there's three different zoning types here, so it's a little bit of a challenge to come up with the design and get through the process, but we satisfied all the staff comments and looked for a favorable recommendation. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions of the applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
Hearing none, don't go far. We'll hear from the public. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, what is the front yard setbacks? Mike?
The townhomes have 20 feet minimum from the property line to the garages, so the townhomes have, they have two-car garages and then two parking spaces in the driveway. I'll defer to Jeff on single-family or Parker on minimum front yard setback on the single-family.
There are two lots within...
Jeff, come up to the mic if you would.
Because of the split zoning, two of the 25 single-family lots are within the R2 zoning, and they abide by those setbacks and minimum lot area. That would be a 30-foot front yard setback on those two lots. The other 25 or, I guess, 23 lots are within the R3 zoning, so they have a 20-foot front yard setback.
Okay, and what is the width of the street? Y'all see where I'm going with this, I'm sure.
Um, it's, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, let me, let me, let me just, I don't, let me not put you on the spot. My concern is this. We all know nobody parks in their garages, and I'm looking at all the development out west, I've been saying this for years, and I keep getting people reiterating exactly what I've been complaining about, which is, we have, the front yard setbacks are too small. People park in the street, but the streets aren't designed for street parking. One of them has to give.
Right.
So, where, so my question is, where are we at with that problem? Is, is the street big enough to park on both sides?
Uh, it's not designed to be parked on. It's straight zoning, so we don't have a lot of influence in being able to apply no parking like we do in most of our PUDs, no on-street parking. In this instance, there's garages. The requirement is for two parking places per unit, per house. So, there is a garage and the 20-foot deep double driveway, so we're contemplating that between the garage and the driveway, there's going to be adequate parking, but...
Well, we know, my opinion, that doesn't work. But I understand that what the zoning allows is what, you know, thank you.
So, Brian and/or Kerry helped me understand, though, because you say it's straight zoning, so we kind of don't have the leverage we sometimes have in a PUD. This is totally dependent on the voluntary vacation of a right-of-way. That's not a property owner right type thing, correct?
The City Commission has that option. I, I guess I would emphasize that the street width meets our LDR requirements. It's not, I don't think we're in a position to advocate for much wider streets, I think.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not necessarily even, I just wanted to clarify, from a purely business negotiation standpoint, we're not in a, we're not, oftentimes, these are before us, and it's either it's in a PUD, or they have, they have the right to do what they're trying to do. In this case, we do have a little bit of negotiation room because they're asking for a vacation of a right-of-way, which we can, there's nothing obligating us to do that. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
Okay. So, to your point about the parking, I tend to agree with you. I'm not an advocate for big, wide streets. They call, talk about speeding and traffic coming, the big, wide streets, routinely, traffic experts will tell you that causes speed. Now, in this kind of a condensed area, probably not, but I don't want to see this go, because the on-street, on-street parking, if it's not used for that, then you get these Speedway-sized roads that people just fly down. There's some spots in Venetian that have that problem, just because their streets are way too wide in certain sections, so.
Interesting, Fair Gray?
Yeah.
It's very wide, but not so, we don't, it's not like we've heard all these problems. But I tend to agree with you. We know this from a engineering standpoint.
Yeah.
Wider streets, people go faster. You want to slow them down, they're down.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah. Other, other comments on this item?
So, these are all sewer?
Yes.
Because just north of that, they just built three houses and put septic tanks on all of those.
Any new development has to connect, the sewer, all units.
Yeah, I'm just...
So, if it's a single lot that was previously platted, they can come in and have septic.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My concern is similar to Commissioner McGurk, maybe for the same reasons. If you're parking on both sides of the street, we can be assured that a fire truck can get down the middle of that street?
That's come up often. That is not legal for two vehicles to park and create an obstruction that would prevent a fire truck to pass through, so, you know, that would be prohibited here as well as anywhere else. Now, is it more likely to happen in higher-density developments? Yes. I think here, given the size of these units, the size of the lots, the two, two-car garages, two in the driveway, you, and the relatively small size of the subdivision, you tend to minimize that risk, but yes, it would be illegal to park opposite of each other.
Gentlemen, remind me, did we hear from the public? Did I ask for public comment on this one yet? Just in case any members of the public wish to comment on this item. Seeing none, all right. I think I did that already. All right, any other comments or questions of staff? Closing comments from staff?
Nothing further.
Closing comments from the applicant? Okay. The commission will now consider the approval of the proposed residential subdivision plat. Gentlemen, what's the pleasure?
I just have a concern, and it's not going to change my vote, but, you know, this, when you go down Ingham, it feels like an, almost a rural road with ranchettes, and we're, we're eating away at that rural feel out west. Maybe it's a natural progression of population growth, but it's, it's kind of dismaying that we're putting in kind of a dense development on what is a rural road. I'm just pontificating here because I know there won't be any changes, but as we go forward, I'd, I'd like us all to consider the density of the projects we make. And a quick question for the applicant, what is the narrowest... And a quick question for the applicant. What is the narrowest lot, aside from the townhomes? What are the narrowest lots?
Yeah, we, the lot minimum width is fifty-foot, and in this one, we went with a minimum of fifty-five, so we're actually five feet wider than the minimum.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thanks, Mayor.
Do you have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Does anyone want to say anything more before I call for a vote? So, full disclosure, I don't know that I can support this. I don't know that I like the density and giving away public right-of-ways to support development. So I, just a couple names that give me pause about it. So, but we'll see where the rest of the Commission's at. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
No.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
I'm gonna have to think on this. No.
Commissioner Cloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Every time. Killing this moss. I'm a no, I said it from the beginning, yeah. I don't, I know it's been a long process to get to this. I read the whole thing, but yeah. Happy to talk to you more offline. This subdivision plot has been denied, nine A. City Attorney, do we want to, this is the first reading in light of what happened on the previous reading. What do we want to do on this? Can, go ahead and push it through to the second reading, or continue it to a date certain?
So I'm concerned with what criteria we didn't, was not satisfied on that site plan? Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong.
Eight, eight B, or C, rather, sorry, E. The subdivision plot.
Yeah, so what criteria was not established on that one?
Let me pull this up. So my understanding is that that one didn't have criteria that we had to establish, right?
It was straight zoning, correct, Brian?
Yes.
Well, but required the vacation of a public right-of-way for me. I mean, that was the.
Right, but that's not part of this review for the.
All right, well, we can go back to eight E, and I can vote yes, and I can vote no on nine A, and that kills eight E anyway. Right?
Well, we can.
But we can talk more about eight E.
So is the plat and development plans, it is contingent upon the vacation request? Would you wish to be heard on this?
Yeah. Again, Parker Minchenberg, seventeen twenty-nine Richwood Avenue. We've met the requirements of the LDC, and I think I heard maybe a couple of the nay votes were over the width of the roadway and the parking next to it. I didn't really speak to that, but if I could speak to that just for a minute. The roadway is your standard twenty-four-foot of pavement with a two-foot Miami curb on both sides, so it's not a high-back curb. You could have parking if you had overflow more than the two in the garage and the two in front of the garage. So if you guys have recommended denial on this, we've kind of met all the criteria, been at it for quite a while, so I'm sure Mr. LaCorre wants to know, you know, what we did wrong in this, because we've met all the staff requirements on it. And another point, I heard about the density. We're about at half of the allowable density, so seemed like, you know, we heard an item earlier where the FAR was increased, et cetera. We're at a half of what would have been allowed density-wise. So I'd appreciate if you reconsider.
Mayor Moon will reconsider.
Second.
Okay, you were, you voted no, right? Okay.
I was on the prevailing side.
You were on the prevailing side as well. All right, we have a motion to reconsider in a second. Kerry, did you want to speak?
I just was gonna say, anyone can second.
Okay, anyone can second. All right, I had a motion in a second. City Clerk, call the roll. This is a motion to reconsider previous item.
May I get the second again, please?
Commissioner Cloney.
Okay. Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
This is just a reconsider.
Yes.
Commissioner Cloney?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion maker. Do you want to reconsider?
Well, I thought I did. I took that. Motion to approve, then.
Okay. So it's where you, all right.
Well, I thought we redid the motion by the reconsider.
The reconsider is just to go back.
Reconsider is just bring it back.
So now we have to do a motion on the actual substantive item.
Now, we're doing a motion on item eight.
And that, which I made a motion.
Motion to approve, all right?
And I will second that.
We have a second.
For discussion.
For discussion. Please discuss.
I understand the concerns that have been expressed. Unfortunately, we have regulations that people rely upon. I don't like a lot of them. I wish there was some things that we could have changed before they got to this point in their presentation, but they really followed the rules. That's my comment.
I mean, I would have to agree. They followed the LDR, they followed our zoning, they've submitted everything, and they actually are presenting a project that has less density than what's allowable. So those are the reasons that I supported the project.
Okay.
And one of the main reasons I didn't was the vacation of public lands for private development. I just would like to have a thoughtful, I'm not saying I can never approve that or support it. I just would like to have a thoughtful dialogue and understand more of, you know, what else might we have ever needed that for? Why was it, you know?
Well, I think that would be discussed under that item, then.
Yeah, I mean, again, I didn't hear from the applicant beforehand, or I would have discussed it with them beforehand also. So I just, I don't know that I can support the vacation of a right-of-way to promote development. So that's kind of my, my concern, but.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question of staff? Shouldn't these vacation have been considered even before this project brought to us?
It's really concurrent, because if, if you're not going to approve this plat, I would recommend leaving the right-of-ways in place. So we wouldn't want to vacate and then there not be a project following that. We want to keep these right-of-ways.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak on the right-of-way?
Sure.
It's not unusual, I mean, I've been at this for almost forty years now in my own business. It's not unusual to come across these paper streets that are remnants from previous plats. In this particular case, there was a vacation that occurred previously where most of the right-of-ways within this property were vacated. These were a couple remnant pieces that kind of were erroneously overlooked. The other point I'd like to make is, we're vacating about seven-tenths of an acre, but then we're kind of relocating where the one was with our proposed right-of-ways that we're dedicating back to the city. So there's quite a bit more right-of-way being dedicated, probably five times as much than what's being vacated. So I just want to make that point.
Okay.
So this is the type of item. It's quasi-judicial. If you do not believe it meets the standards, we've got to talk about why it doesn't meet the standards. Your professional staff has obtained that it meets the standard, so we would need to flesh that out on the record.
Okay, so Kerry then helped me with that. So, so under that, then, I, so, okay, so it meets the standards, and then we get to item nine A, which we don't vote on the first reading. It comes to us for a second reading. Are there any standards for why we would have to approve that, or is it truly just?
If there's no use for the public right-of-ways, so it gets sent out to, like, the Utilities Commission and anyone who might need it, and if nobody has a need for it, you know, and you've established these other areas that you have vacated, so I'll have to get back to you on what the specific criteria is, but that's usually the analysis. Is this needed? If it's not, you vacate it.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we had a motion, so we brought it back to reconsider. We had a motion and a second on that reconsideration. If no other discussions, City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item nine A.
Ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach, Florida, vacating two separate portions of platted right-of-way in the Lockhart subdivision, generally located at the northeast corner of Mission Drive and Old Mission Road, providing for conflicting ordinances and providing for an effective date.
Okay, that second reading and public hearing and vote on that will be conducted on August tenth, twenty-twenty-one. And Kerry, I look forward to discussion on the legality of the, the, the obligation.
The standards related to the.
Yeah. Commissioner Cloney?
Just to staff, have we sent out notifications of the proposed vacation to all the other agencies?
Yes, we followed the guidelines and our code.
So you have?
Yes, we have.
Okay. The only reason I ask is if till August, whatever that date was, if that's sufficient time, get responses back.
Yes, from the utility companies and all the other agencies who have an interest, yes, we have time to complete that by tenth.
Thank you.
Okay. Item, okay, all right. So there's a public good element of the vacation, so that'll be an interesting case to read. Item ten A, Boards of Commission, Fire Pension Board, we have an appointment to an unexpired four-year term. It was a change reflect, sorry. Well, one remaining vacancy, that's right, it was yours, and you continued it from last time, if I recall correctly. We have one application for Jolene Joyce, who desires an opportunity to serve on the Fire Pension Board. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Jolene Joyce.
Jolene Joyce, that'll be for a four-year term, expiring November first, twenty-twenty-four. I had a motion and a second. Sure, an appointment, I guess, do we vote on those or no? I can't remember. All right, let's vote.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, historic preservation, we have two, two appointments to make to serve three-year terms, expiring May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. We have received, we've not received any applications from citizens for this board, so this, the clerk has recommended the reappointment of the, of the two, of two members, Lan Bennett and Angie Bretta-Herman, to serve those terms, and in doing so, we'd also have to waive the two-term limit on Ms. Bennett.
I make a motion, I make a motion to reappoint them and to waive the.
Second.
Three-year limit. I think one was a partial term anyhow.
The two, the two-term limit. All right, we had a motion, we had a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herman is here, we appreciate that. The Police Pension Board has a remaining vacancy. Commissioner Hartman, I think this is yours, oh, no, wait, you're, you're, sorry, you're vacating the seat. We have one application for Joseph Worst. The City Clerk recommends appointing him for a two-year term on the Police Pension Board. Have a motion.
I'd like to make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion to appoint Joseph, and a second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for your willingness to serve. Mayor and Commission reports will begin with the Vice Mayor, as always. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The issue of Sixteenth Avenue is.
Can I speak to that before you?
Surely.
To give an update?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I'll reserve the rest of my comments.
Yeah, I'll come back to you. I just, I have.
You want to go before me?
I just, I can give you an update on that, just if it'll save time.
That would be very good. Thank you.
So at the request of the Commission, at maybe our last meeting or the one before, Khaled and I have met with, I think it was, we ended up with being able to meet with five. We weren't able to meet with all seven. Met with five of the, of the County Council. At times, there were some staff present, mostly it was just Khaled, I, and a council member or the chairperson. Shared the concerns of the Commission and the request to pause that, that project for further dialogue between the city and the County Council. I also took the time today to go to their meetings, by the way. We run a much tighter meeting in the county, I'll have you all know. They hadn't even got through proclamations like two hours into the meeting. It's like, oh, my word. So I don't want to hear anything else about how I run a meeting, or else you're subject to sitting in the County Council meeting. So went out, spoke again on behalf of the Commission today during public comment, and again, asked for a pause. Just before the start of this meeting, I did hear that that was brought up by the County Council, and it will be considered as a future agenda item. They're going to bring that back to the, to the County Council to consider. The concern I have heard, and Khaled will, will brief each of you individually, the concern I've heard that was brought up at the meeting, and you can all go listen to this, was that the notion that I heard was that the city had somehow been pushing for that, and the county was just basically doing the city's bidding, and so now they're feeling like we have changed our mind, and they want us to stroke a check for any costs that they have incurred. I don't want to sit here and debate tonight. Let's let staff figure out the, the past. Let's pull the meeting minutes. I've got our clerk working on it, they're working on it. Let's figure that out, who said to do what, when, where. Let's let staff give us a full report, but that's where we're at. The County Council will be reconsidering. There is also an ongoing process of litigation with the homeowner. The city is not a party to that. That is between the county and the homeowner, although I think we did have the testifying, at least Kyla did, that wrapped up last week. I know I was on some of those. I saw you every time on that, on that call. Of course, you and I didn't talk. It was judicial proceeding. We just both attended on occasion. So that's where we stand on Sixteenth Avenue. County Council is kind of bringing that back up for consideration, and so in between then, staff will give us, give us all an update and more information, and I'll again be looking for you all to give me some direction on, or give staff or one of us some direction on how we negotiate that with the county. I did stress it to each of them, just so you know, because I was speaking on your behalf. We have enjoyed a good relationship with the county, and we need to continue that, especially at the staff level. And I said it today publicly and I said it privately to each of them. No matter the outcome of this, we're not going to blow up our relationship with the county staff or council over this item, that we will publicly and privately support them. We may agree to disagree on this, and I'm not saying I may not fight it a little bit, but once we reach conclusion, we will conclude and move forward and continue to work well, because that's to the betterment of all of our citizens, especially the citizens of New Smyrna. So I hope that was helpful and maybe gives you some of the answers you might have been looking for.
Yes.
With that, it's your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be brief. And staying on the Sixteenth Avenue project, if my memory serves me well, it was a previous commission that had the desire to relieve traffic in the north end of the Barrier Island, and I believe, if I'm correct, a thought was to open up Sixteenth Avenue to vehicular traffic to access the beach.
That's how it started.
Yes, and, and so I, I kind of questioned to myself, I, I don't like to criticize people in my, that, that sit in chairs like these. It doesn't come easy, because I know what a hard job they have as well, but I just questioned the whole process of how now, if there is no desire, I don't know if this commission has a desire to open up the beach to cars accessing. What is the purpose of one of the proposals to have a very tiny parking lot, which will destroy a dune, and a pretty crucial dune system? And, because we don't have very many of them. And I, and I, I don't want to speak too much to that situation that we, that we listened to and, and had purview to, and.
And to be clear, it's more the proposal. They are, they have chosen that proposal. They had three. They chose that one that was the parking, and they are proceeding with it. I brought up. I brought up, the cost was, the cost per space compared to other projects, Col and I talked about this with their staff and each of their electeds, is disproportionate, there's just no economies of scale because of the ten parking spaces, you know, you're paying seventy thousand per space, where we've built similar facilities for twenty thousand per space. So that's the part for me, as a finance guy, it just didn't make sense from a dollars-and-cent standpoint, so...
And just from an environmental sense, again, they had DEP, take a look at this, the point is, what is the benefit? I look at the quality of life for the zone that I represent and the area, and it seems that this does more harm than good. I see a small benefit in placing a walkover on that site, but to put parking in a place in a residential zone, to scrape away a dune system, to possibly harm the gopher tortoise through relocation and incidental take, I don't, I don't see the sense, and I know that the county council can criticize me, I welcome their criticism all the time, and I would gladly praise them for all the things they do for us, and they have, in fact, they labeled our walkovers with numbers now, which is, which is good for safety's sake. So they do good things for us, and I want to keep that good relationship, but I see so much harm in that one project. I would love for them to consider a much cheaper benefit for the county, for the residents locally, and even visitors who want to walk, if they want to put a walkover there, a wooden structure, that would be welcome, but I just don't see the sense in creating ten parking spaces, which there's very little room, and I'm afraid, you know, I don't know where the county's going with parking, so if they could be clearer with us...
And I shared some meeting minutes from a 2018 meeting that the county council had as a joint meeting with, was that Daytona Beach Shores or South Daytona?
It's the shores.
The shores, where they discussed exactly, exactly that, so maybe where we're heading is something of that nature, where we make sure we're all on the same page, but trust me, I relate all of these concerns almost verbatim, because I heard them all when we discussed it, so these concerns were relayed to the county council individually. I didn't dive into them in detail today in public, because I had talked to each of them individually, and the point was just to get them to consider pausing, and so now we'll be able to, as they consider that, we'll be able to speak more in depth with them at that meeting, probably in public. So, and again, I'm happy to speak on the Commission's behalf on that, just, we obviously can't all be at that meeting and speak, so it's, that's just how it typically works, so...
Okay, thank you. And that's what I wanted to share, aside from the fact that I want to thank the chief and possibly fire rescue, if they had to roll this past week and weekend, it's been pretty crazy around here, visitation is up, people are anxious to get out and go to the beach and, and party like mad, but you kept order, and I really appreciate that, and we had other services help provide that. My only concern, and I have to stress, this is, I think it's taxpayer money that pays for overtime, if I'm correct. I'm not against our officers, firefighters, any of our staff making overtime where they need it, where we need it, but if it's an unsanctioned event and we have to provide our taxpayer dollars to pay for an officer, that kind of smarts, so you know, you can't, you can't call up the guy in Orlando and say, hey, man, we'd like you to consider paying for the, all the safety we provided you for your event, the bike and bar, the truck rally thing, which fortunately really didn't center here, but we get a lot of impact here, and our police officers are heavily taxed, and so are our residents, but that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you, Mayor. So the dog park, I met with Roger Miller, it was an interesting meeting. Well, dog park, great idea, well-intended. I urged the rest of the commission to stop by and meet with him, see where he lives, the proximity of the dog park. I asked him to get together with him and some of his direct neighbors who are directly affected with the dog park, and try to come up with some possible solutions to the problem. So I did have a brief conversation with Ashton about it, expressed the same information. It is what it is, it's certainly sitting in his home, it is, he does have a hardship, not intended, excellent idea, but the gentleman does have a burden. It's not like he bought next to a dog park, we put it in next to him. So I will be looking, hopefully, for some kind of remedy to this, I don't know what it is yet, I'm asking for them to come with some ideas, instead of just, and I don't want, it's very emotional for him, and of course, I don't want to get off into a lot of different issues, because that distracts from the specific one. And I told him, I said, don't talk to me about the people you see out there, whether dogs are fighting, or what's, or people aren't handling the, because all that is very subjective. What is not subjective is, his home is incredibly close to the dog park, and it does create, in my opinion, an unreasonable hardship on him. So I look forward to, tonight what I saw was good, but that wasn't exactly what I was hoping to see. I will reach out to him and encourage him to get with his neighbors and see if there's some kind of remedy and suggestion they can come up with. The second thing I wanted to discuss is, a couple weeks ago, I went out to Publix on a Friday night, because that is the way I roll, Friday night at Publix with the wife, hey. So what I saw...
This is a public forum, don't you?
I know, gotta watch out that Publix, you know? So when I went there, there, it was a beachside, and there were a whole lot of kids hanging out in the parking lot, not local kids, for the most part, kids from other cities. I grew up in Miami when the gang problems started. It was eerily reminiscent of that situation where you can very easily have a group of kids in a car club that mean no harm, turning into groups coming over where they see easy spots to get, to wreak havoc in a community. What I was incredibly pleased to see was our cops on it, watching the situation, not getting in there and, there was no confrontation, they just let them know, hey, we're here, we see you, and it was, and it went well. But I do want to point out that I believe that this town, we are not a twenty-five-thousand, a population of just twenty-five thousand, we are not a sleepy little town of twenty-five thousand, and we're going to need more cops. And I think you saw, a little situation similar, you saw down on the beach, I want to assure you of one thing, as Central Florida grows, and New Smyrna is the place to be, we will get a lot of this, and if we are not prepared, we will have a very difficult learning curve. So I have no problem with wanting to get more police officers, not only what we have budgeted for, but I want a plan to go forward, because we have so many events and so many things going on. It's just not realistic that we have the police force that we have, and we're compared to a town of twenty-five thousand population. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. I see some of the negative aspects of the growth, I mean, we complain about the house and the traffic and the golf cart, we can all have a lot of fun arguing about that, but this is the kind of growth that we're going to see, that is very negative, and they will find weak spots in cities and places, until they're not weak spots anymore. So anyway, I just wanted to share that, I grew up with that, I watched that happen around me as a teenager, and all I'm saying is, if we're not prepared for it, and I want to say, chief, you guys did an awesome job. I have no idea whether you knew or how you got to where you were, I went to Publix, saw the issue, and I was just incredibly impressed the way you guys handled it, they didn't overreact, they didn't underreact, they let them know their, it was great, great job. That's all I had, Mayor.
So I have a couple things, I also met with Mr. Miller about the dog park, and I went there on Saturday, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, you know, there was only like one dog there, so I didn't hear the noise and stuff, but his bedroom window is like ten feet from the fence. When we went there for the initial grand opening of that, you know, it was a wonderful facility, it was a great idea, I had assumed that we had talked to the neighbors, but since then, we've now put a playground where children are, and we've had to put a fence around the playground to keep the dogs and the children apart. I think that we need to rethink that idea, we need to go back and revisit that. I would, hopefully, think that we could come up with some quick solutions to maybe eliminate some of the issues, but I think that probably the whole project needs to be rethought, whether it be shifting the fencing to a different location, or however we do that, close it down completely, I don't know. But, but it does give me serious concerns about the quality of life for the neighborhood, because it was not only him, but it was all the people across the street who were also had concerns and interest in that. So I hope that going forward, you know, that we can look at that, revisit it, I'm glad to hear that you want to have some kind of a meeting with them to see if there's, there's a way to mitigate that, I certainly would support that, and, and I know we can't both be there, so, you know...
Is it yours own or yours on?
Yours on. So hopefully, you know, we can work something out there quickly. I did notice that the only car parked in the parking lot was not a Florida, did not have a Florida tag on, so that raises, you know, his concern about who's coming in and whose dogs, and, you know, whether or not they're vaccinated, so that does also give some concern, especially with, it's a small playground with small equipment, so I think it's designed for small children, and you know what a small child's going to do, they want to pet the puppy, and I think we have some concerns and possibly some liabilities there, so that maybe we need, should, and think about reconsider that. My other concern is, I got a couple phone calls from people who live on Neverland, forwarded to Brian, the concern was, is there restrictions in that PUD about on-street parking? Apparently, there's a lot of people on that street, it's turned into a residential, or a temporary, it's not a homeowner thing, it's more of a rental units, there's several rental units all along that street with multiple cars parking, I think code enforcement has also been actively involved in that. So if there is no restrictions on the parking, then probably we may need to target that area a little bit more with, with double parking...
What's the name of the street?
Huh?
Neverland in Coastal Woods.
Neverland, yeah. You know, if chief could maybe work that into the plan somewhere where we can park, if we truly, if they truly can't park side by side, then maybe that just needs a little of attention and may eliminate some of that problem, so, that's all I had, I hope you all had a pleasant and joyful Father's Day.
If the dogs are unvaccinated, they can just wear masks.
How long will you wait to say that?
Oh, I wanted to say it earlier, but it didn't feel right, it didn't feel right with the citizen here, but I...
Yeah, he's not happy.
Yeah, I didn't think you'd think it was funny.
The dog didn't have a mask, but he did go to the playground.
Commissioner Clody?
I have four things, none of which will take a long time. We just passed a subdivision that preserved our wetlands, preserved our trees, put in a number of lots that were halfway decent size. What we don't have in our regulations is any type of requirement that was, have any dedicated open space that could use by humans. We're saving the frogs, we're saving the trees, but we're not making a community, we should amend our land development regulations to require a certain percentage of area be set aside for open play areas, depending on the size of the development, maybe they could be municipal parks, but that's something we should...
About a dog park?
Dog park.
I have suggestions on that, but I'm not going to say them, and I love dogs. There was, now you got me started, there was a serious dog bite case in the intercoastal on one of the Barrier Islands, it came up at low tide, so there's no good place to put dogs that's truly safe. That wasn't my four items. Second one is, when we passed a couple of regulations, some of which I really approved and pushed for, we said anybody that's got an application in should be allowed to continue and put their application through without being required to adhere to the new requirements, because they run plan. We might want to consider modifying that to put a time limit on how long that exception continues. On this twenty-eight-lot subdivision, as Brian stated, they did comply with the wetlands requirements we had, but who's to say, one of these developments that was around six or seven years ago is not going to come back, and they won't have to comply? So I think we should look into that, staff look into putting a, some type of limit on how long that exception can go on. Third thing is, I did receive literature and spoke with a resident on Hope, which is in the Central Beach Storm Water Project area, they regularly get a few feet of water in the road, that extends all the way up to the house, because the system was not designed to handle some of these small storms. They praised our maintenance staff for the amount of time and effort they put in to try to keep the system functioning to some type of level, but it just doesn't work. I was going to go down there and look today, and I couldn't bring myself to do it. I know that we've kind of come to the conclusion that we need a major improvement there, a small pump station's got to be made bigger, and I would like the staff to proceed as quick as possible, I know they're working on it, to get a solution in there. I'm going to meet with them, they've written and asked to meet with the mayor also, so I think we should pay attention to that. The last thing is our homeless situation. I think that we should look towards establishing a safe zone type of place that they have up at First Step, which can be opened for us to take people to overnight when they're troublesome and invading private properties, something that could be open overnight, closed at nine in the morning, I forget the exact hour, as we did speak about it earlier. I would like to see us concentrate on that particular area, it doesn't address the social needs of people who really need some help, but it would help our existing residents with the confrontations that they do have. One suggestion I brought up, the old building that's available now on West Canal Street used to be Volusia Motorsports, maybe we should look into renting that building as a temporary solution, that we could then staff and have a place to let the homeless people go, so they're not out causing difficulties. Something that I'm sure Collett will be looking into and considering. That's it.
All due respect, I don't support that, just so you know where you stand with me, and I can't, like I said, I can't think of a place that makes sense.
I understand that, and I know all the people that showed up and that kept track of the reasons that they found not to have one where we proposed it, and of all those people, seven of them simply stated the same thing you did, not in our town, but I think that we really got to work to help our neighbors. Thank you.
Let me know when you got a spot in your district, I'll be more than happy, I may be willing to reconsider.
Quick question, are we going to have further discussions on this topic? Because I think we can go a little bit further in depth.
So I think we covered the briefing, it was on the agenda briefing, agenda, so I assume it was covered with each of us. Collett talked about, he visited First Step Shelter, he's going to bring us back some information on that, and some related ordinances, and so, yeah, that conversation is not, is not finished here in New Smyrna, in fact, it's kind of just, just starting in some ways, so. All right, I had a couple of things, Collett, before I dive in, though, there was one that you were supposed to remind me to bring up? Do you remember what it was?
The Sixteenth Avenue...
Was that it? All right, so we're ready. Again, all right, so I've already done it. All right. I'm racking my brain, like, all right, I told Collet to remind me, because I knew I would forget it. All right.
That's a sign.
I haven't even hit 40 yet. The, where do I start? All right, let me start on the dog park. I've, I've said this before, I forget, it was the homeless issue, actually. I could have sworn that we talked about, that we, the collective we, had talked, you know, I think we, this we, the five of us, asked the collective we of staff, realtors, et cetera, did we talk to the neighbors? I feel like we did that. If not, then shame on us. But that has got to be, we can't do it on every single item, like with this, this residential, you know, proposal Mission Road. We're not, we can't go talk to all those neighbors, it is what it is. But for things like that, or the homeless issue, other things where we do have a high degree of latitude of control, we have got to be feet on the street, somebody knock on the 10-door surround, and let them take it from there even. I'm not saying we have to talk to everybody, like, it's amazing what will happen. I don't even know how all the Riverside folks knew to show up at 5:30 for the calming meeting, like, just, you got to find the one person in the neighborhood and then say, okay, take and run with this. But we can use interns, we, I will go do it if we have to, but I am weary of us getting something in front of us, and then we either have acted on it, or we're about to act on it, and the public acts as if, like, you know, this is the first I've ever heard of it. And again, I've defended us, saying, like, I can't, I can't go door to door throughout the entire 227,000 doors, but we can at least talk to the guy 10 feet from the dog park, the dog park we're about to put in. So, that's a miss on our part, I'll say all of us at this point, that's a miss on our part, if we didn't talk to that guy before we put a dog park, to at least give him a heads up as about to happen, try to get his blessing on it, or try to premitigate some concerns, maybe we just have, would have put in half of it. So, again, I don't know how that slipped through the cracks, but we have got to, we collectively as a team, the city staff and the commission, got to be more proactive and talk to the people within a radius of these projects that were driving. Again, if it's some other development project, we do all the right legal notices, it is what it is, and I'll continue to defend this to the public. But if we're driving the boat, we can't have that kind of miss, because I, I got nothing to say to that guy. I mean, the best I can say to that, guys, I'm really, really sorry, if you didn't know this was happening until that ribbon cutting happened, and you started hearing dogs barking. That, that's tough, and I applaud you all for going out there, it's in your zone, I applaud you for going. So, anyway, so, I pledge to do better, I hope we can all do a little better on that, and then we'll try to fix this one moving forward. We got to figure that out, and I'll be part of the solution. The last two, and a few of us touched on it, you know, we, we have been overrun, we've got these events that are not, you know, we've got the events that come before us, the Seaside Fiesta, great event, well-managed. I saw tons of city staff there, I saw city staff in uniform, I saw city staff not in uniform, they were there enjoying the event. Those are great events, they're sanctioned by, by the city, they're, they're controlled by the organizer, those are great events, and we all want to see more of those, and I'm glad they're back on the, you know, glad they're back to, to happening. Then we have these other events that are unsanctioned events that invade, for lack of a better term, our city and our surrounding cities. I can tell you, the Truck Week event has caused quite the stir in Daytona, we received minimal overflow, but I definitely saw quite a bit of them out there. I think we were able to, for once, deploy support north to help out with that. But to hear Billy, Commissioner, or Councilwoman Wheeler, talk about it, because she's been very involved, she talked about the meeting today, and to Collet now, when we met with her, I mean, the stories that came out of Daytona, so, they're dealing with this, they're, and they're asking for, they're trying to put together a committee, probably will be a little focused north, but I asked for us to have a seat at the table and be a part of it, with our public safety, because we need to have a unified plan and unified approach of how we deal with these, so that when these events start, we hear these coming, because they're organized now on social media, they're not organized by, not an organizer per se always. It, it can be a bit more spontaneous, the minute we hear about it, we should have some kind of a regional plan, and staff does as good as they can, our public, you know, safety does as good as they can, but, anyway, so, more to come on that, know that they're talking about organizing something, but I agree with everything Commissioner McGurk said, and I, I hope we're getting to the point where we're able to, it sounds like we're able to add officers, we're actually finally filling some positions we've long since had budgeted, I know we still have turnover, though, but I agree, I, I think we have to staff up, I said it 100 times, almost, the good majority of the things that come before us and the citizens are asking us to solve, it's either a land development issue or a law enforcement issue. So, we've got to staff those areas, because that's where the, that's where the rubber's meeting the road right now. So, you know, it's speed control, it's, it's crowd control, it's whatever the control is, and it's, it all lands right there. So, we're doing good with what we have, but as it comes time for budget, that is a top priority for me, because it's impacting our quality of life throughout this town, and we're just seeing the tip of the iceberg. That spring break event last year worried me, I mean, it genuinely concerned me, to the point that I stood on Flag of the Two in the Morning, just kind of watching it, because I wanted to see it with my own eyes, because I heard the stories, I had the residents' call, and I just wanted to see what was happening, and it was concerning. I mean, we were, we were outnumbered by much of 16-year-olds, whose parents were god knows where, but, and so, we did, we did a fantastic job, but I agree with you, this is growing, it's becoming an issue, and I want to make sure we're staffed up, and then have a great plan in place to deal with these things. So, as that committee hopefully gets formed for regional, we'll be a part of that, and then hopefully here locally, know you have our full support, my full support at least, to try to add some more officers to the extent we can find and hire good people, because we got to be staffed up for these. And any metric that compares us to a city of 25,000 isn't a relevant metric, because we're not. Every weekend, we're not, and every event, we're not, which is pretty much every weekend. And I think that was all that I had. Anything else that I missed that you know of? Carrie, anything else that you recall that we talked about, that I needed to talk about? All right. Next up is, who do we have for our city manager report? Collet, anything on yours?
Just a quick, you know, Monday, Monday morning quarterbacking, I think, you know, we had a good idea about the dog park, we should have went and had a, a public meeting, and there's a way to reach the public, we've done so many public meetings, so, I think we will do a better job next time when we have a good idea, that sometimes it kind of takes away our thinking of what we need to do. On the homeless, as I mentioned to you during the briefing, that I went to the First Step, and I talked to the manager and talked to a couple of employees there, and I saw what they have, they have the shelter itself, and then they have the safe zone. The shelter, in order for us to take those homeless individuals, there's a process we have to go through, but the safe zone, it's, it's probably a lot easier to do that, but I needed to, I'm going to meet with the city attorney and the police chief, probably the end of this week or next week, to look at all the legal aspects and enforcement issues, and, and most likely, I will come back for the, with the commission, with the recommendation in August, figuring out the fees and what it costs and what it involves in terms of us joining the First Step. I also would look into, you know, the, the building that Commissioner Colodi has suggested on 44. You know, I mean, that, it's on 44, people are going to say, it's out there, you know, people coming into town, that's what they're going to see, but I will look into leasing the building, what it costs and so forth, and I'll bring it back to you in August.
I have a problem with this.
Yeah.
I, I think we need to have direction from the commission, at least, that was what I, the point, I wasn't trying to just pick on Mike, I was just saying, I don't support that, and I don't support you spending any time on it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, let's, let's pause real, real quick, if you're going to, my assumption was, like, that was thrown out as a, I mean, I just mentioned about adding officers, I don't expect the chief to go start hiring 10 people based on what I just said, that was planting the seed, like, hey, let's add this in the budget, let's, you know, let's make sure the commission agrees, you know, so, I, that's how I took that comment, was, as we continue this conversation, if you're wanting to go take action, or if Commissioner Colodi was saying to go take action tomorrow, then, yeah, we need to get commission consensus before we spend a ton of time from staff on it, so, because I also don't support, at this, where we're at on everything else, I don't support spending a lot of time on that particular building.
I like the direction staff is going now, First Step, we'll see what's there, they have the safe zone, that to me is a good direction to be in.
Figure that out, and then we can come back to if we need a local thing, so, anybody, I need somebody else either for or against to see where that one lands.
I'm in favor of the way it's going right now.
All right. So, it's not dead, we can always come back to it, but don't, don't go any further down that, because I heard three of us that weren't in favor of that, at least.
The reason I did that-
I don't know what you stand, but we got majority, so.
Yeah. If I could make just a quick comment?
Sure.
I appreciate the thought that we would aid people who want to go to First Step to get there. It's going to take a lot of officer time, yes. Will it, will it be efficient? I don't believe so. We're, we're only going to take a tiny few people-
Yeah.
-who want to go, and we're still going to have this tremendous homeless problem, which I pray that-
Let's, let's debate that when he brings the First Step back to us, I don't-
Yeah, that's fine.
We understand that, but that's not, anyway.
All right, anything else in the CM report?
If you have any questions on the report, it's self-explanatory.
Yeah.
Any questions available?
City clerk?
Just to mention, your calendars have all been updated for the meetings, advisory board meetings that are originally usually held in the city commission chambers, that's being shut down for construction, so the Brandon Center staff has been wonderful at accommodating us. All of the advisory board meetings for July will be held over here.
I, I did have one thing I forgot to mention to the, to the commission, so, the next time we will see each other, happy July 4th, by the way, because the next time we will see each other in a public meeting, not at a community event, will be the July, is it 30th budget workshop?
July 29th.
July 29th budget workshop. I have another obligation, so I will not be able to be at that. I know it's important, I tried to work with staff to reschedule, but unfortunately, there were other, other obligations of others, and I was last to come in and ask to reschedule, so, it is on July 29th. Best of luck to my vice mayor, who will be running that meeting, hope you all get, don't get stuck in a two-two situation, so.
We're going to make sure of it.
Well, the beauty is, it's the budget, so you got to do something, like, you got to-
We want you to come break it up.
I will not be able to be here to break that one up, so, so just so everybody knows. So, Kelly, and then, as you say, then the next meeting after that will be in our new commission chambers. Very excited about cutting the ribbon there.
Fingers crossed.
No, 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 it's a done deal. Michelle signed it.
Just keep in mind, there is a June 30th meeting, budget meeting here in the, in this stuff.
Yeah, that's here, the June 29th meeting is here, or, or, yeah, sorry.
June 30th, July 29th.
I skipped one, all right, yeah, there's that one, and then there's the July one, and then there's the one in the, in the new meeting. My point is, we're about to be out of here.
At some point, we're going to have a meeting.
My point is, we're almost finished here.
Yes.
But the Brandon Center staff has been fantastic, thank you all, so. Kelly, anything else? City attorney?
No report.
How nervous are you about that 9A? We threw you for a loop on that one, didn't we?
I would encourage you to read Brian's staff report, which is excellent on 9A there.
All right. I forgot to tell you, I'd oppose that one, so, all right. City, uh, meeting is adjourned.